Okay, just let's move on to the next one because we can't vote on it.
Motion to table.
Motion to table seconded by Commissioner Levy. Anything further?
No.
All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Four hands. Commissioner Dougato?
It was muted, so I didn't hear what the motion is for.
So we just had them, because there's gonna be abstentions from Commissioner Corcillo and Levy, because they weren't, haven't reviewed August 12th meeting minutes. I suggested a motion to table so we can talk, we can review and approve next time. Because the three of us, we can't vote on it. Well, we could, but we just couldn't pass it. So we're just having a motion to table the minute minutes. Meeting, meeting minutes.
Aye.
You approve? Okay, thank you. All right. Next item, new applications for recommendation to public hearing. Sixty Katona Drive, special exception application by Brett and Kim Sherman to convert an existing building to a daycare facility that Goddard School design, in the Design Commercial District Zone. Let me call. Any reason not to call them all together?
No, I just wanted to add to that particular item, Emily.
We'll just take it individually then.
Emily and Harrigan, Planning Director for the record, that you may recognize that address. That was a prior application that was proposed for a conversion from an office building to an apartment building. And the daycare purchased the building and now would like to do that office conversion to a daycare facility instead.
Purchased it, okay, interesting. May I have a motion, please? Commissioner Levy?
Move to refer to public hearing.
Second, Commissioner Corcillo?
Yes. Required.
Yeah, required, required. Anything further? Put this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Four hands. Commissioner Dougato?
Aye.
Thank you. Next two I'll call together, application for ninety-five Old Post Road. Application by Metro Holding Company LLC to establish a Design Commercial District Zone on land presently zone, Design Industrial District Zone. And special permit application by Metro Holding Company LLC to construct a new mixed-use building with seven hundred square feet retail, three thousand six hundred twenty-five square foot, second floor office and three third floor residential units. Currently in the Design Industrial District.
Do you have anything else to add? Thank you.
Motion for the two. Commissioner Levy?
Hearing.
Thank you. Second, Commissioner Corcillo? Anything done?
Required.
Are you ready? Put this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Four hands and then aye, so it passes unanimously. Next item is, okay, let's, we'll call the first one, zoning regulation amendment. Application of Town of Fairfield to reformat the existing regulations with tables and reorder and reorganize the existing language into more orderly sections. Revisions to the content have been made only to be compliant with statutory changes as per required section eight point two of the Connecticut General Statutes. This has been tabled from last time because have, we have, we had a quorum last time, but we just thought it would be appropriate for this entire commission. Kind of in the same boat. Same time, I don't think this is or too controversial. It seemed pretty clear as to where everybody was going. I'm okay again with another tabling should the commission so decide. Get everybody together on that. Maybe it makes one more sense for one more try and then if everybody's not available, maybe the next time go with what we have. But I leave that open to the commission. We've got five of us. We've all heard it, so. Commissioner Levy?
I mean, I'd be amenable to tabling, but in light of the fact that other than a few minor typos, the substance is identical and I don't see any reason we can't just forward on it. I don't know that there's any controversy of any sort. So I'd be willing to make a motion to approve.
You start there.
Okay, I'll start there.
Motion to approve is their second.
Leave me to the second.
Commissioner Corcillo second. Commissioner Levy, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I've looked through them. In fact, I've sort of played with them over the last months. The draft we had is, I find the order is far, makes it far easier to locate information. Also, the ability to link from one section to another and to move back between the table of contents and the regulations. It makes it far more user-friendly, both for us and members of the public. And I've checked a number of places and I've got over two typos, which I'm sure will be corrected. But other than that, there's no substantive difference or change. Other than I think that the regulatory change eliminating the minimum size of units in accordance statute. On that, I think it's a the, all of our benefits and public benefit to approve the transfer to this floor.
Did you communicate the typos to staff?
I did.
We know what they are, just maybe the reference.
Yep.
Just, because your motion is based on the typos.
Yeah.
Typos.
Seven point five point four. The reference to seven point thirteen point four should actually be, I think, seven, well, it, it, the thirteen is wrong. And similarly, seven point six point five, there's a reference to seven fourteen, let's be changed, seven point six seven.
You've communicated that.
Yes.
Staff, what do we, how do we think about that? Is that?
They're appropriate corrections.
Okay, great enough. Anything else?
Nothing.
Commissioner Corcillo?
I agree with everything Commissioner Levy said and I would just add thanks to our staff. I know a lot of work went into this and this needs to happen before the remaining steps in this process can happen. So thank you for all the work that went into this.
Thank you. Commissioner Randolph?
I support the effort and appreciate all the hard work and I think it will help us. It'll, it'll enable us to make the necessary additional pending text amendments that we've all have. Thank you for the hard work.
Thank you. As I think everybody said, and we reviewed this recently with staff in a planning meeting and about a year or so ago as well. And as been discussed, this is only to adjust formatting and only adjust formatting or to update state statutes. So no changes to the regulations. Should anybody want to change the regulations, it'd probably be easier to do that now that it's like this. At no point do I remember any challenges or objections or anything along those lines. And obviously, if anything is made now, it can be amended in the future should we so decide, so. I don't mind voting on this now with the people we have, because I think it's it's very, what's the word? Nobody's objected to it, so not objectable and as you said, it's I'm fine moving forward. Yes, thank you to staff, because I know that was a big, big task, a big effort. We have others as well with OCD and regulation changes, and this is one of the pretty important steps, those are the other two. Anything further? Put this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Hands and an aye, so it passes unanimously. Thank you. This is one oh eight, so this is one on our Qs, so.
Okay, I will call the next three items together. Zoning Regulation Amendment, application of attorney Stephen Bellis on behalf of contract purchasers, one oh eight Bayrow LLC to create a new section five point three for a Bayrow Development District. One oh eight Bayrow Street Zone Change Application of Attorney Stephen Bellis on behalf of contract purchasers, one oh eight Bayrow LLC to establish a Bayrow Development District on land presently zoned residency. And one oh eight Bayrow Street Zoning Compliance Application of Attorney Stephen Bellis on behalf of contract purchasers, one oh eight Bayrow LLC pertaining to a new one hundred unit residential development pursuant to section eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes in our residency zone. I know there are some folks here for this application. See, we have without Chair Noonan, with Chair Noonan being recused, only three regular members and one alternate present, while technically giving us a quorum, I think, given the complexity of this application, I don't think it's appropriate for for us to vote on this this evening with this small subset of this commission. And so I'm going to request a motion to table this vote to the, to our next. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I move to table as you've indicated, we're for staff tonight in terms of commissioners, this is a matter that I think should, you know, merits input in an executive session from two of our missing regular members, as well as I'm not sure what other alternates might be, you know, required. So based upon that, I think this matter should be tabled. Soon by next week, school's back in session and most people should be back. It might be good to put it over for at least one week.
You have a second? Commissioner Randolph?
No, I agree, I agree that we don't have, this is a controversial topic. We don't have adequate representation on the commission. We will leave that on, on table.
Thank you. Anything further?
Did you have a first and a second? I'm sorry.
Yes, Commissioner Levy first and Commissioner Randolph seconded. Anything?
To a date certain of next meeting.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dougato, anything further?
I agree with everything that's been said before.
So about all those in favor of the motion to table these three items to next week's meeting, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And passes unanimously.
Now we have, oh, thank you. I'll call the next two items together. Zoning Regulation Amendment, application of fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street LLC to establish a new section five point four Congress Street Affordable Housing District pursuant to section eight thirty G of the Connecticut Statutes. And again, fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street Zone Change Application. Fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street LLC to establish a Congress Street Affordable Housing District on land presently zoned residence triple A. So I understand staff asked for more time for their, to get comments in order, which is fair considering how busy we've been. And I think he's listening to the conversation just a second ago, again, with only five of us here and another fairly controversial thing that probably needs or even more time, comments from staff and, you know, more people as well. I would think a motion to table would be appropriate. Whoever wants to make the motion.
So I'll move to table to next week's meeting.
Next week's meeting, Commissioner Randolph? Anything further?
I agree with everything you said, but it'll end, and really a repeat of the conversation we just had, and I would add the complexity of this. These applications, which are different than what we typically see, even on eight thirty Gs, given the picture of having a conceptual site plan, I think that's something certainly I could use more time in, in the community issue and not what we've been, we've really encountered before.
Yeah, and I think staff's comments will be helpful as well in that respect. Commissioner Randolph?
Yeah, I'd also like to ask our other commissioners who are of the same party, just to show up next time. I hope, I hope, I hope they will make the time and effort to come to the meeting.
Well, I mean, yes, everybody kind, everybody's schedules, I mean, we're all volunteers, been meeting once a week. Almost a year now at this point, so.
Yep.
You know, nobody, I think everybody's been pretty dedicated and stuff and, you know, it's been a two day, two weeks that we've had sparse attendance, but that's very unusual, so. Anything further?
Just, I'd just add that attendance reflects the last two weeks of August. You know, the August vacation period.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it is the summer vacation, meeting once a week for a long time now. Uh, motions to table, can we put it to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. And then on to our coastal site plan review. Ten eighty-five Harbor View Coastal Site Plan Application of the Town of Fairfield for upland staging areas as part of the repair of the lower wharf seawall. T shape here has been approved by Connecticut deep in the residence R three zone. Stobol, good evening. It's working.
Good evening, everyone. Member of the commission, Jonathan Mullin, Assistant Planning Director. Before you is coastal area management site plan review for ten eighty-five Harbor Road. Proposed activity, well, first, the, the existing site is a public parcel known as Lower Wharf located at ten eighty-five Harbor Road in Southport. The site is bordered by Harbor Road Residential Development in Southport. Upland areas consist primarily of open space lawn accessible to the public. Shoreline of the site is characterized by a stone seawall, which, which stabilized the filled upland areas. Portions of the seawall are in disrepair and need to be replaced. The wall appears to be dating back to somewhere in the eighteen hundreds and as you said, the area is located in the R three zoning district. Proposed activities to replace consist of the following, replacement of the timber piers, creating a T-shaped public pier and associated timber piles. Inline reconstruction of one hundred and ten linear feet of existing deteriorated stone wall on the south and west sides as shown on the project plans. The seawall contains a concrete coping with a top elevation of of plus eleven point two mean lower level water line. There's also repair of two hundred and twenty feet, linear feet of existing deteriorated stone wall by chinking and face reconstruction at the existing concrete coping. The seawall have concrete coping with a top elevation of, again, eleven point two mean water, mean low water level line in accordance to state or rules. There'll also be maintenance and repositioning of approximately a hundred, hundred thirty-five linear feet of riprap protection. And there'll be minor upland regrading as necessary to fill in the voids or variations in the existing ground. Only upland area, only upland activities are concerned, are, are part of this application. And for this project, that's the stockpiling. Everything else is located seaward of the CJL. The D, Connecticut DEP Land and Water Resources Division issued a license to the town on May eleventh, two thousand and thirty-three. Due to the extensive review associated with that license approval, this coastal area management site plan review was not referred too deep as was deemed. Only redundant. The staff recommends approval of this coastal area management project with the following conditions, one, the soil erosion set of patrol plan shall be included on the project plans and installed and maintained during the entirety of the construction project at the subject site. And number two, stockpiles should be covered to prevent wind blowing from affecting adjacent water systems and resources. And I'm available to questions if you have any.
Thank you. We have a motion, please. Levy?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Corcillo seconds. Commissioner Levy?
Stobol, is this, if memory serves, I think a few years ago, we approved, there was an exchange of property and revetment. This is sort of the same area before your time, but.
It was before my time, so I, I can't speak to anything that happened prior to June of this year, but. So I, I don't know if the director might have any more insight on that.
I think, are you Emily and Harrigan, Planning Director for the record, are you inquiring about the, for lack of better terminology, the dog beach?
Yes.
Yes. So that was a donation of land by an adjacent private property owner. And this does include the seawall that is directly adjacent to that donation piece. And that's what allows us access to be able to repair the surround for that retaining wall, for that parcel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Corcillo? These structures are, are clearly in severe disrepair, so also be, need an apartment.
Commissioner Randolph?
I, I support this with the conditions specified. This is real asset to the community and, and its repair will is, appears to be needed and so. Very glad to see the repair being.
Pretty straightforward, as a per, as well. Show of heart. Said. Questions or comments? Or can we put this to a vote? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Or hands and. Commissioner Dougato? Step aside, which is fine.
Can you, I, I'm having issues with my microphone, sorry.
No worries. Thank you. All right, so it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our public hearing. This is, uh, let's see, which ones are, oh, the first two are together. All the first two items, zoning regulation amendment, application of Primrose Development LLC revision to the zoning regulations to add section five point five point for revision to the zoning regulations to add section five point five point one Black Rock Affordable District to allow the construction of affordable multifamily housing pursuant to section eight thirty G of the Connecticut general statutes. And forty-two twenty-one Black Rock Turnpike Application of Primrose Development LLC to rezone the parcel located at forty-two Black Rock Turnpike, the Black Rock Affordable District zone on land presently zoned as residents triple A. Uh, if I, if memory serves me, we've left off in public comments, a few people had, uh, yeah, the op, I look at the opportunity to speak last time or wait till this time. I think a few people took opportunity to speak at the last hearing, but Attorney Green, I think you're up in this, correct? Um, and then you want to, well, we start with you if that's okay, and then we can go to the public, remaining public.
Fine.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, for the items C, three and four, uh, we received a request from the applicant for those two items to to continue this until the meeting on September second.
Okay, so let's do that while so somewhat early in case anybody's here for those. Let me pass on the first two items that I just called. I'll call sixty-five Station Street. You can, Attorney Green, you can say. Organized Station Street Zone Change Application of SF Station Street LLC to rezone portion of parcel from residential A zone to neighborhood design business district, and sixty-five Station Street Central Permit Application of SF Station Street LLC pertaining to a new six thousand eight hundred and forty-two square foot office building with associated parking and landscape improvements, again, in a neighborhood design business district. So, uh, Ms. Harrigan, the applicant is asking for a tournament, so they say when or?
September second.
So we need a motion on that, or should we just?
Um, I, it's, it's up to you. I mean, they still have time, so we don't have to open it and then extend it. They're just extending uh, the application.
Okay, so I should just, without opening the hearing, we'll adjourn it to September. What was it again?
Second.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Do that. All right. So recalling the first two items from Primrose Development LLC for forty-two twenty-one Black Rock Turnpike regarding the Black Rock Affordable District, uh, at least the proposed set zone. Attorney Green, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission's staff. Public, uh, my name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport with the offices of Green and Gross. It's my pleasure to appear before you this evening on behalf of Merritt Parkway Conservancy, the Greenfield Hill Village Improvement Society, and Greenfield Hunt. Merritt Parkway Conservancy, and, uh, as you know, is a nonprofit organization dedicated to preserving and enhancing the Merritt Parkway. It works to protect the Parkway scenic, cultural, and environmental assets through education, advocacy, and partnerships, and the Conservancy collaborates with various stakeholders, including DOT to address issues like landscape restoration, bridge preservation, and invasive species management, and to preserve, once again, the historic view and character of the Parkway. Greenfield Hill Village Improvement Society is organized to make effective the interests and efforts residents and property owners of Greenfield Hill for the general benefit and improvement of the town of Fairfield generally, and to study recommends sport undertake and participate in public and private plans, projects, or activities for the benefit and improvement of the area and of the town of Fairfield generally, and to oppose those deemed prejudicial. Greenfield Hunt is a well-established planned residential community, including over a hundred residential units. How many units?
One hundred.
One hundred. Okay, one hundred units. Uh, that is up gradient and abuts the subject property and would be extremely and adversely affected uh, by the proposed development. Uh, we appear, uh, before you in strong opposition to the pending application, seeking a text amendment to Fairfield zoning regulations and a corresponding amendment to the zoning map, and, uh, it's intended solely to permit the three buildings containing, and I'm going to say two hundred and four units, but a lot of numbers were bandied about, uh, when I listened to the hearing last week. It's two hundred and four, the number, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Bellis at this point.
Yes, it's the maximum number.
Oh, no, yeah. Two hundred and four at forty-two twenty-one Black Rock Turnpike pursuant to section eight dash thirty G. It's our position that the application represents an unprecedented and unjustifiable unjustifiable intensification of land use. It's incompatible with the environmental constraints of the site, town's existing zoning framework, the critical public interest in preserving historic and natural resources, assuring public health and safety, and preserving the peaceful use and enjoyment certainly of neighboring residents of their properties. Uh, I have, uh, I'm going to talk to the commission. I, I, I watched, uh, the public hearing, and I want to thank the commission staff for your courtesy and Attorney Bellis for your courtesy in holding the public hearing open till tonight to allow me to attend, to not appear last Tuesday, but, uh, in listening to the presentation, I thought that, uh, the history is a little bit lost, and there've been, um, a number of applications that involve sort of these sites in the area, most notably, there was an affordable housing application approved in two thousand and twenty-one for ninety-six units at forty-one eighty-five Black Rock Turnpike, which is parcel A. I have submitted into evidence.
Hartford Healthcare?
It is now, the Hartford Healthcare, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit. But, uh, just so that the record is clear, I put in, uh, to the record and submitted this afternoon. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on them, but I put in, uh, the deeds, uh, to, uh, the, uh, properties at, uh, forty-one eighty-five, forty-two twenty-one, and, uh, the property next door to that, uh, forty-two sixty-seven. Uh, I put in the assessor's field card, and I put in the reference map that was referenced in those deeds that shows sort of the division of those parcels, and really, I think, is a better representation of the site because it's our position that the drawings are really hard to read, and that was evident in the, sort of the many questions I heard, listening to the totality of the hearing last week on kind of what, what is the site plan, what is, you know, what's what? And so I thought that by submitting those materials, it would be easier for the commission to follow. Once again, in two thousand and twenty-one, the ninety-six unit affordable development was approved. I represented the Ronans who lived across Black Rock Turnpike and appealed that, uh, approval. And in the course of the appeal, there was, uh, communication between the applicant and Hartford Healthcare that culminated in the application. Uh, before that, you may remember, there was actually a medical building that I think was proposed. I'm going to say nineteen ninety-nine, uh, there was a, a larger medical facility building that had been proposed. The site lines have been moved, the site plan has been moved, uh, and amended in many ways, uh, but, uh, uh, I just, I don't, wanted to clarify that history. Uh, there were some comments made about the application process, and I do not, uh, I, I want to make it clear because there seemed to be a lot of, uh, discussion. There is no case in Connecticut that deals with sort of this application process directly that rules upon this. The Eureka case has been cited in this application. I know it was mentioned in the course of the hearing. It was mentioned in the application regarding fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street. The Eureka case does not adjudicate the issue of this process of filing a text amendment and a so-called conceptual site plan. And I think the, eh, the law is very gray on this, and Judge Berger was referenced, and Judge Berger is a Superior Court judge. He presided over the land use court for some years. He has written a, a number of opinions involving, uh, land use matters and notably eight dash thirty G, but to be clear, there is no opinion out there and no case law in Connecticut that addresses this process that's being used by the applicant, and, uh, I just, I just think, and I'm not asking the commission to draw any legal conclusions, and that certainly ain't cut outside your role, but, uh, I just think the record should be clear that there's no case law either way on this. And certainly, the Eureka case adjudicated other issues involving wetlands, in fact, uh, with an application.
But to be clear, because I just, in reading the Eureka case, that's my reading, is that the legal conclusions of legal issues don't address this, but it is fair to say the facts are that, the facts that predicate that decision are, they move forward with just a regulation amendment with a conceptual site plan.
Correct.
So whatever, yeah, we'll just leave it at that, because as long as we're on the same page as to what the that's what the facts are for what the, with the predicate, whatever, that was the predicate facts for whatever that decision ultimately ruled, and I don't recall it off the top of my head, but I think that's what Attorney Bellis is only saying is.
It, that's, that was the procedural framework, but it was not challenged in that case. It's just the point I'm making.
Fair enough.
So, uh, I, uh, I am not satisfied, and I'm just, I'm not going to, this is not something necessarily for this commission to unwind, but I'm not satisfied that the applicant didn't necessarily need an inland wetland permit at this point. I am not satisfied necessarily with the notion of a conceptual site plan. I do not believe that the site plans submitted by the applicant, uh, meet, uh, any standard or, uh, uh, a site plan conceptual or otherwise. I would note that the wetlands, uh, are not the wetlands, the site plan that was produced, uh, was from two thousand and eighteen. Uh, I will note that, uh, these, this wetland flagging was performed well before this site plan was produced based on my recollection of the prior application. There is nothing in present application that deals with where the wetlands are on the site. There is no, I didn't see a wetland report in the record of this case, and I don't believe that this commission I don't think this there's, the, there was some reference, uh, by, uh, consultants for the applicant in this case as to some wetland inspection or some work being done, but there's nothing in this record on that, and I would submit that the the site plan that is produced, once again, that forms the basis, uh, for this application is dated October fifteen, two thousand and eighteen. It is seven years old. The wetlands were mapped well before that. It is evident and obvious that there are significant wetlands on this site that are not, once again, currently mapped. Significantly, the site plan that forms the basis for this application informed the basis for a number of opinions, including uh, the traffic consultant, uh, specifically, this site plan specifically says that it is not valid unless it embossed, unless embossed with a seal or fixed with the live stamp of the signatory. The site plan that was submitted is not signed, it's not stamped, and as far as I can tell, it is merely a draft of a site plan that ostensibly was prepared by, uh, Huntington Company, but once again, it specifically says by its terms that it's not valid, so, uh, I.
Well, I guess, you know, I think it's been proposed as a, I don't tend to like this, but it's been proposed as a conceptual plan, more than a site, I keep saying a site plan because, you know, it looks like, but I'm not proposing to like it, it's just, I guess it's being proposed more as a conceptual plan at this point.
I would urge the, uh, commission to view it with great skepticism. The term conceptual site plan is used in the statute, it's used in regulations, and it is not really specifically defined. And, uh, I would suggest that if, at least, even if it is conceptual, even if it is a conceptual site plan, someone is preparing it and stands behind it and says, this is my concept, I am an engineer, I sign off on this, and uh, I'm not sure that it's as casual as attorney, well, as the applicant suggested at the last hearing, when the applicant suggested that he could, if I do with this level of detail, because I disagree. And we have regulations on that. I would suggest that the site plan, um, misstates the, um, the intersection, it misstates, uh, the condition, the accurate, the true condition of Black Rock Turnpike at the present time. Can the, I submitted a, an aerial drawing, uh, today, if we can, all that drawing up.
While it's being draw, uh, pulled up, you mentioned you may, you have regulations to the fact that the conceptual site plan may need to have more information than what's been provided. After this, can you turn to that?
I can, I can do that now.
Whichever works, I just, I don't want, I am interrupting your flow, but without.
No, that's all right. We have a regulation in Fairfield, it's regulation two point four four, which says, uh, and this was adopted pursuant to the Connecticut general statutes. And it says, any petition for an amendment of the zoning regulations or for a change in the zoning map in connection with an affordable housing application shall be accompanied by a conceptual site plan prepared by a Connecticut licensed professional engineer describing the proposed development's total number of housing units and their arrangement on the property, and the proposed development, developments, roads, and traffic circulation, sewage disposal, storm drainage, and water supply. So that's in two point four four.
That's in our zoning regs?
It is, and it must be prepared by a Connecticut licensed professional engineer. I would suggest that, uh, while this is prepared by the Huntington Company, I would suggest that without the, uh, signature of, uh, and seal of Huntington Company, I don't, again, it, that company specifically says that this is not a valid draw. So I would guess that it doesn't need a regulation on that basis. And you can see, if you go to, uh, yeah, it's, and the next one's tighter. Actually, we'll go back to the point just before that.
Go ahead, Commissioner Levy.
While we're on that point, would you, is it your position that, uh, two point four four is in response to eight thirty-three?
Yes.
Subsection C, which says a commission by regulation may require that an affordable housing application uh, include a conceptual site.
I do, yeah.
There is that state regulation Attorney Bellis has referenced though that says regarding that subsection C, I don't have the site in front of me, but you know, state regulations, somewhat mirror the citations of the state statutes. That says, that I think it was further into that section by saying, any municipal regulation, they only do three or four items.
Right.
I don't, I mean, I, I, I don't remember, but my recollection is that our regulation, does our regulation conform with that state regulation?
I have not.
Okay. I'll be, I'll do, I think.
I have a drawing, I'm just going to, for the convenience of the commission, um, this is a blow up of, uh.
Changing topics.
He's going to move on to the last one, sure.
Yeah, just a question for this chairman.
Sure.
These are procedural questions. Is it possible to get advice from the town attorney? Since it's not, it doesn't address the substance of the issue, it's.
Well, I think he, he's, has propounded an opinion on fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street about whether conceptual site plans are required. Uh, we can redistribute that, um, but I can't imagine it's any different than what this is going to be.
And the contention was.
Hold on, hold on, that, that's between us and him, so it's not.
So fourteen, I'm sorry, so fourteen seventy-seven Congress Street.
That was the earlier.
Yeah, he opined on this.
Yeah, that was sent out, I think. Right, Mrs. Harrigan?
Yes.
All right, maybe we can, if you don't mind resending that to everybody.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry.
Last question.
Go ahead.
I'm just playing devil's advocate. Uh, if in fact this either meets the requirements of a conceptual site plan, if at a later date, um, a site plan is submitted, would you agree that that too would have to meet the, the requirements, be submitted pursuant to an eight thirty G, uh, standard whereby? Whereby um it wouldn't be just a zoning compliance application, but if you want. What I mentioned would have to consider whether or not that site plan as presented relative. Presumably might be clients with a text amendment approved, but it would still have to. Um you know, we would still address the question of whether or not it presented a potential threat. Arm to the uh public welfare.
So that's a great question and I think you would have to uh evaluate those eight dash thirty G criteria. Uh the applicant made a concerning comment early on in the hearing. The last session saying that the review would be administrative and suggested that, and that's troubling to me. Cause that would be the applicant suggesting that it's sort of just a. Pure dimensional site plan review thing and I don't believe that. And I would also suggest that the applicant's own regulation says that it would have to satisfy this regulation. And eight dash thirty G, so.
Yeah, I think I, I think I addressed that with him.
Yeah, you did.
And I think at the end of that. He, I think he. Uh drew that idea that it was administrative and that he would be.
I agree.
Yeah, okay, so I think even he acknowledges the applicant, who Attorney Bellas acknowledged that. Should we accept this regulation, any future, any future site plan compliance under this. Proposed regulation would be under an eight thirty G standard.
Yeah.
And I, I think, and I said, we, we, well, I do this, if we go down that route, it's much more explicit about it.
Okay, so this, all this drawing is, I've, and I've handed this out. And this for everyone who's a remote, this is just the layout plan. That's attached to the application and all I've done is blown up the area. Yeah, I expanded the area at the driveway from the site plan that's in the record, the layout plan. And for purposes of the commission's using this little lay, you'll turn it upside down, they compare it to the layout. And what you can see is this appears to show, for example. Two lanes going northbound or uh you can see. Uh it appears to show two lanes here headed. I'm gonna say westbound, I guess, the way that the site lays out. And yet the reality is, if you look at that overhead drawing and I verified that, that's a. Google Maps and I verified that that is the actual layout. There are not, in fact, two lanes going westbound there. And I would suggest that this, this site plan, I believe, was very preliminary. And you can see that there are a number of deviations between what this conceptual. I'm not gonna call it conceptual draft site. Uh was and what actually exists uh on the ground. At forty one eighty five Black Rock Turnpike. So I just, again, I question whether the commission should rely on. And I understand we're gonna have this battle over what conceptual site plan is, but I'm just gonna throw that log on the fire for the.
This one question, um what's displayed, that's from Google Maps?
Yes.
So that's the existing entry to Hartford Health and what appears to be going westbound would be parking for. Uh is that existing Hartford Health parking or?
Yes.
Okay, which would eventually lead to the proposed parking for this conceptual.
That, that grass dirt area is part of a. And if you, you'll see the deeds that I put in evidence, they're part of a fifty foot permanent easement. That runs along, uh parallel to Black Rock Turnpike and is in that area. Between the parking spaces and Black Rock Turnpike and you'll see that that easement was granted in order to enable the.
Access to.
And, well, it was really reserved by, I'm gonna call Fairfield Medical, Parcel A. Uh can we call up the map seventy eight eighty two because that would be informative and I'd submitted that.
Yeah, but before, before you switch. To clarify the discrepancy, you're saying that this drawing is different than the condition.
Correct. Correct. I had submitted a.
So I guess my question is, that's existing, whether or not this uh conceptual. Would, would alter that um of fashion.
It's not evident.
U-turn.
If you compare it to the traffic study, you'll see that's not evident.
My question.
Okay, so this was the original division map. And you'll see that parcel A. Parcel A and parcel B, parcel B is forty two twenty one. Uh Black Rock Turnpike, the dark area is a permanent easement that was actually reserved by parcel A. So that dark area is part of parcel B. And it, the dark area is an easement reserved in favor of the Hartford Healthcare. Parcel in order to enable the Hartford Healthcare owner to install landscaping that was required. Pursuant to approvals that it had gotten from wetlands and from this commission. So you'll actually see that the deed says. It's to install, so um the purpose of enabling the adjoining parcel presently owned by the grantor. Install and maintain the trees and shrubs along Black Rock Turnpike so as to comport with that certain planting. And site plan dated February twenty four, two thousand fifteen marked received at TPZ Commission Public Hearing. So that's from the original medical building. Uh that, that predated the affordable development, so once again, there was a medical building that was proposed. And there was a hearing on that, then there was a ninety six unit affordable, then Hartford Healthcare. A smaller twenty five thousand foot building that you see now.
It was the easement, you don't mind?
Go ahead.
Uh is the easement, is that property, that dark area, is that owned by parcel B?
It's owned by um, it's owned by parcel B.
And so the easement runs in favor of Hartford Health or the.
Yes.
Owner of A for purposes of landscaping and planting.
Yes.
And is that the area that conceptual site plan proposes access?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Sure. And that zigzag area was only, that zigzag area you see was just a temporary easement. To create the retaining walls and that kind of thing behind the Hartford Healthcare building.
We haven't seen anything. That parcel A is waiving that easement. In any way that I've seen in the record so far.
No.
I guess they could waive it theoretically.
Well.
To be on the record.
It, the easement provides that parcel B, that parcel A cannot interfere with access for parcel B, so I, let's not. We don't have to get involved.
Otherwise our parcel B would be landlocked.
Yes, so it provides, it's owned by parcel B. And parcel A has it to do landscaping, but the, even the landscaping cannot interfere with the access.
Okay, so he can still.
I'm not trying to.
I'm sorry, I, I thought you were going the distance to say that you can't have access to it.
No, no, let's not, I don't wanna wrap.
No, no, that's fine, I, that's what I wanted.
Good, so anyways, okay, we're clear on that.
Just to.
Go ahead.
Just to be, just to confirm what we're clear on, there is a landscaping requirement on. The hatched area labeled CB two here. Dark area up there, but that landscaping does not interfere with access to.
Correct, correct.
Thanks for.
Sure, okay. Got a lot of great comments here, but I'm gonna move along to uh.
They're great, put them on, I mean.
I'm gonna call, um actually, we're in a good spot. Uh I'd like to call Michael Monteleone and I know that he's online.
Excuse me.
Unmute himself. Turn your camera on too.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Monteleone.
Yes, sir.
Can you just briefly, for the benefit of the uh record, uh. Uh describe your education, training and experience.
Sure, uh my name is Michael Monteleone, I'm a senior vice president at Simcoe Engineering. Um located at one oh four West Fortyth Street, um New York, New York. I have a master's degree in uh city and regional planning and I've been doing traffic studies and traffic analysis and. General uh traffic engineering work for thirty eight years.
And over those thirty eight years, are you able to estimate? The number of projects you've been involved with that involve uh traffic matters?
Hundreds.
Hundreds, okay. And uh are you licensed, a licensed professional engineer in this?
I, I am not, but I work under the auspices of a licensed professional uh PE in the state of Connecticut.
Okay, so you have licensed professional engineers in the state of Connecticut at Simcoe.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And uh at my request, did you uh review the access and uh traffic study uh by the applicant?
Yes.
And in, in doing that, what did you do specifically?
Um we looked at um the synchroanalysis that was done specifically at the um. Intersection of the uh site driveway and Black Rock Turnpike. And um and the neighboring um intersection at the ramps to the uh, to the parkway. Um we also took a look at the access to the uh site itself. Uh we did uh auto turn analysis um for vehicles, larger vehicles getting to and from into the site. And we also looked at the uh access road and how it intersects with the current driveway. Um of the uh existing development leading out to Black Rock Turnpike.
Okay, and uh. First of all, are you able to comment on whether the drawings uh. Provide a basis for a thorough analysis of the traffic issues involved with this application?
It, it does not, we're not able to really understand the traffic flow within the site. Um it wasn't specific enough or in, in great enough detail to do that. Uh we were not able to look at any elevations to determine if there's any uh site issues on, on the site. Um for, for vehicles traversing the site, um we did not get a handle from looking at uh what was provided. Um whether or not there were locations for um staging of delivery of vehicles. Uh any height restrictions within the site, if there's any um overhangs. Um also, um the number of, of parking spaces available. Um to accommodate the projected number of, of um, of units. Um and um. We also were not able to uh fully understand the intersection between where the. Access road to the property intersects with the current intersection at close proximity. To the intersection with Black Rock Turnpike and how that would work. Because we see that as a, as a, as a dangerous situation.
And even uh though you've heard our discussion tonight that the plans are conceptual, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
But even as a conceptual plan, uh you were unable to. Uh confirm that even from a conceptual standpoint. That the traffic layout, that the driveway layout is safe or adequate for the proposed use, is that correct?
That, that is correct.
And uh did you, so what are the uh issues that came to your attention after the review? That uh you would like to bring to the attention of the commission?
Sure, so in terms of access from um. Fire apparatus and, and larger uh trucks, like tractor trailers and, and, and larger um delivery vehicles. Um if you look at the maneuver that the vehicle needs to make, um operating. I guess it would be southeastbound on Black Rock Turnpike, that turn into the site. Um is hard enough as, as it's designed, but, but you have to make a hundred and eighty degree turn. To get to the access road in a very short distance, in, in probably about twenty to thirty feet. You have to make that turn, which is, which is impossible for any vehicle of any size at all. And we did the auto turn analysis for various sizes of vehicles and none of them could even come close to making that turn.
And are you able to show um your auto turn analysis drawing, are you going to display that?
Sure.
And is this what you had just emailed to me?
Um, do, do you see it?
Just a moment.
Has this not been put into the record?
This is not.
Yeah.
It was just completed.
Yeah, so if you see the, the, the vehicle coming in, it, it could barely make this turn coming into the site. And you'd have to turn a hundred and eighty degrees here to get up the hill to get to the site, which is, which is impossible. Um so we don't know how in the world, uh any type of delivery vehicle, emergency vehicle. Is gonna be able to make that maneuver without going into the site and you, making a U-turn and then coming back.
So what kind of vehicle, I'm sorry, I. Is any, let's start with this premise, could any car make that turn?
Car, cars can make the turn at a slow rate of speed, yes.
Okay, that's where I was getting a little confused, but your contention really has more centers on emergency vehicles and. I assume the gray trucks.
Trucks. Right, any, any, any type of vehicle uh of any size, um emergency vehicles. Any type of trailer or, or, or truck would have a very, would, would be impossible for the. Larger vehicles like emergency vehicles and, and this uh tractor trailer WB sixty seven to make that turn. Um a hu- a hundred and eighty degree turn to go up the hill, um impossible. Um we didn't test every type of vehicle, um but um, you know, we don't have a scaled. Um engineering drawing to do this on, we had to do this basically tracing, uh you know, the aerial. To get an idea as to um, you know, what the limits are and, and the uh, and the distances, so um. You know, and, and the, and the applicant di- obviously didn't provide any auto turn analysis for this particular uh entrance into the site. Which we think is a critical um safety uh factor that needs to be um, you know, fleshed out. You know, before any type of uh approval could be given for this, for this uh application.
Commissioner Levy.
On the uh conceptual plan, would it be fair to say that a large truck or tractor trailer proceeding eastbound on Black Rock Turnpike? In order to make that one hundred and eighty degree turn. It would be required to cross over into the westbound lane. In order to have sufficient room to make that turn, is, is that a fair analysis?
It would be, to get into the site itself, yes, but then to try to make that. Um that hundred and eighty degree turn up the hill, it would be impossible because of the, the short distance and because of the size of the vehicle.
Or uh assuming it crossed into oncoming traffic. Then it could do that, though dangerously.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't, I, 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 we didn't test it to see if it would work if you cross over the lane, but I don't. I'm, I'm looking at this right now, I mean, you could barely get into the site, um let alone, um you know, make the turn to get into the road, which is here. The road is here. And this is, this is, this is the limit of the, of the parking, uh of the existing parking lot. And this is the, the um, the curb of, of Black Rock Turnpike, so the road is, is in between here. So this vehicle would have to make this turn and wrap around, you know, uh. You know, a, a vehicle of seventy plus feet, I, I, impossible that, to be able to do that, no matter what the scenario.
And based on the drawings, you can't even do that analysis because this. Plan, once again, does not reflect field conditions, is that correct?
Co- co- correct, right, yeah, we're, 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 we're approximating, but I think it's a, a legitimate approximation, but, but without. Have, having, you know, scaled um engineering drawings, it's, it's tough to get a, an exact. Um read on this, but, but based on experience and, and, and just looking at this. Um trying to get into the, the actual, um, the existing driveway is, is, is hard. With, with, with a larger vehicle, let alone trying to make a hundred and eighty degree turn, you know, in, 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 in basically like thirty feet.
But.
That's impossible.
But uh looking at the, even the Google uh overhead aerial that I had sent to you and looking at the site plan. You have no question that under. you have no question that under no circumstances would a vehicle of that size make that turn?
Impossible.
All right, and uh once again, just for purposes of the record, this does represent a public health and safety issue?
Ab- absolutely, absolutely.
So without question, there is a near certainty, not even a likelihood, there is a certainty of there being a public health and safety issue and resulting harm to vehicles and uh the people driving them on the roads there.
No, no, no question, no question at all. Um um basically, the other thing you have going on here is a mixing bowl. So you have the traffic coming down from the hill on the access road, and you have about thirty feet to get over into the into the the lanes to either make a left or a right turn on the existing driveway. Um if there's any kind of a queue here, there's no place for these vehicles to go. Plus, anytime a vehicle would make a left turn here, you have the right turns coming off of uh the the southeastbound Black Rock Turnpike, and that's, that could, that could, that could definitely be um uh an area where where collisions could happen, because it's such a short distance. If you have any kind of speed coming around that that curve and a car making a left turn here, um it there's there's very little um uh ability to see, to see the oncoming traffic as as they turn.
And it would be the same issue, so that vehicle that you're showing, is that the kind of vehicle that, for example, would carry uh a bulldozer or a construction vehicle or a moving van or that sort of thing?
Yeah, yeah, any 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 vehicle of any of any length, you know, including emergency vehicles would fall into this category where making, trying to make a hundred and eighty degree turn in a short distance is is impossible for those for those vehicles to make.
And the box trucks that we see that are straight trucks, as they are, straight jobs as they call them, also could not make that turn?
Yeah, yeah, a- again, we didn't do an analysis of every type of vehicle, even even like the um the uh Amazon uh vehicles would have a hard time uh making that turn. Van, yeah, 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 it's 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 a very, very quick and abrupt turn.
What's the classification of that vehicle, by the way?
Which which one?
The Amazon van or those tru- or the rider rental truck?
Well, they're 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 called the transit um cargo van.
All right, I don't know. Uh so, Mr. Monteleone, um what about in terms of the site?
No, no, it's okay, I just
I just had one question in fairness. Um what about a uh large truck proceeding westbound? Would uh that be able to negotiate the uh entry into the property?
Um it would be difficult, it would have to cross over um the exiting traffic to be able to do that and have enough swing to get into the um uh the the uh access road to the to the residential site. Um again, we didn't uh, we didn't look at every uh permutation, but but um but it's a fair point. Um it w- it would, it would be a difficult move for larger vehicles to be able to do that without um without hitting into uh vehicles that are that are queued waiting to turn left or right at at the intersection.
Thank you.
Commissioner Randolph?
Um, Mr. Monteleone, um usually there's a prescribed amount of ru- of driveway separation, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Um what what generally, what's that, what would be that number to create a safe condition here?
I mean, I I I'd be, I'd I'd feel a lot better if it was fifty or sixty feet instead of twenty or thirty feet, that's that's really short.
And so where would you measure, where would you measure that from, just so we know, what that twenty or thirty feet represent? Center line of roads?
Yeah, so if so if you if you if you were to, in this case, from the stop bar um back to the um to the center line of the of the of the driveway coming down. Um
I'm I'm really referring to the exit from the apart- proposed apartment complex from Black Rock. How far that seems to be posing the hazard is the close proximity of the driveway coming down the hill from the apartment and Black Rock Turnpike, which are parallel.
And Right, right.
So what what would be the proposed separation, uh uh and I'm assuming there's standards on that dimension?
Yeah, well, this is in internal, um so every every municipality has different different standards uh based on uh a site pla- plan review.
There there are national standards?
Um gen- general, general standards. So so you probably, you probably would need at least sixty sixty feet uh between between the two. You know, that gives you like three car lengths to uh between um between the intersections.
A- and then related to that, so coming down the hill from the um apartment building um in the the right lane, how how would you study that to assure whether it's safe to go? I always think of Black Rock Turnpike going north-south, but we've been calling it east-west, so I guess going uh eastbound, so you're going eastbound on the driveway, and I'm looking at the the plan that um Mr. Green uh provided to us. So if you're going eastbound on the driveway coming out of the proposed complex and you're going eastbound, um how how would you study that to see whether it's a safe or dangerous condition?
I mean, you could, you could model it in 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 synchro to see how the the vehicles um move against one another.
About the the movement, because you're you're crossing a, you're coming on the inside of a stop bar, you're coming down the hill from the proposed apartment complex on the right, in your the right lane, you're you're going into a stop bar? And are you, you're not queuing behind the stop bar, are you going in front of the stop bar? Um it it just, I'm I'm just, how how would you evaluate that? What would need to be done to evaluate the safety of that?
Well, a- again, the 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 distance between the stop bar and where the where the um the other driveway uh lands, you know, usually I I look at like three, three car lengths at least, minimum to uh have between the two, uh to give you enough queuing space, because the way it sits now, even if you have one car or or two cars, you're you're blocking the um the driveway, because there's no place for them to go. So they have to sit and wait before they can, and wait for somebody to move before they can move into this into this spot, and otherwise they're gonna block, they're gonna block the entrance into the site. And it's such a short distance that um the amount of time for a driver to react after they make a right turn is not is not much at all.
And so does this um configuration um uh pose a safety, safety risk because of the geometry?
A- absolutely, I I'm like I've ever seen something so short in terms of uh, you know, an access to a to a major, a major roadway like this and 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 a and a secondary driveway. This this is really, really tight, and and it it it's, it's something that that is not, is, in my estimation, is not safe.
Fifty fifty-eight is a state road, um what responsibility would the applicant have to get approval from uh CT dot?
Well, this is, this would be considered an internal driveway, so I don't think C dot has any any jurisdiction over the internal um, the internal uh roadways within a a site. That would be more of the um, the local municipality in the site plan review process to legislate over that. The 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 state, the state of Connecticut would only be interested in 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 the in the um the driveway that actually contacts their road, which is, which is the existing, existing driveway.
But this this road, I'm just looking at the the diagram, it looks like this driveway contacts the state road as well.
That's the, that's actually the easement, uh the dark area is the bounds of the easement.
But I'm saying the radius on the, say, the the northbound
Yeah, you're correct.
Side of the driveway impacts the state road.
You're correct.
Uh I'm looking at the, we're at elevation one twenty-eight on the drawing that was provided to us.
Actually, it's
I can't, I can't see that.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, fetish grade one twenty.
Finish grade one twenty-eight, and the the radius on that curve affects the state road, so likely a- and I don't know the regulations in Connecticut, but how would we confirm whether CT dot would need to approve this?
Um, I'm gonna give that to the applicant.
Okay. We're right, it's just the radius, it's the state road.
Uh well, it does, although you can see that the original radius comes from the medical building here.
Right, but the original radius hit the state road and this new radius hits the state road as well.
Does, it does, but it doesn't alter it.
Well, it alters it significantly in this drawing. You had an old radius that you're cha- that was approved and you're changing that significantly.
I see what you're saying.
I mean, if the, if I may, if the, you know, if we don't think to ask our town's engineering department, um it's my understanding, it's not just the driveway, but it's also the number of trips generated that also triggers DOT review adjacent to a state road. So, but but I don't know that engineering would be the town resource to ask that question if it is the commission's desire to have an answer on that.
If you could ask that question, I would appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
I think if we can, actually, if you can enlarge that drawing that's on the road and focus on the area we're talking about, which is the driveway there. So, Mr. Monteleone, what they're talking about is, you can see the original radius on the sort of the southerly side of the driveway is that thin line, and then the proposed driveway has a darker, much tighter radius
Right.
right above the one twenty-eight finish contour, right there, right? I think the question is, so whether the state would get involved in a review of that modification?
Yeah, that that would, that would be up to them to determine if they felt um compelled to want to get involved in this and that it would have an effect on their, on their roadway.
But once again, this drawing in that area does not accurately depict Black Rock Turnpike under any circumstances.
Right, and then then this, and this gets back to the whole notion that without having, you know, a scaled engineering drawing with uh definitive um layouts, it's hard to tell exactly because if this moves five feet one way or the other, it it makes, it makes a difference. And um, you know, not knowing that this is the plan that's being um forwarded, it's it's hard to, it's hard to jump in and 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 comment about about it in in uh in great detail because
I'm sorry if you said this earlier, wasn't the, didn't the applicant though also meant to some extent to have it come out more? At the entry?
I think this was the last iteration.
No, I was gonna say, I thought the, there was another iteration that had a more rounded um, that had it more, yeah, rounded, to have a bigger
Is it on, is it on on the website?
Also, I feel like we discussed it at the last one, I just don't
Was that the drawing that was submitted at the last hearing?
I don't believe that it was actually submitted by Attorney Bellis, but it was referenced by uh Jason Edwards in his presentation, so I don't
That's a problem if it's not part of the record.
Yeah, so I don't believe we have it as of yet.
Not part of the record.
Okay.
Uh and um so, just to sort of put a a a pin in this, the concept that is presented, this conceptual plan is unsafe. This concept is not safe. Is that your testimony?
That that is correct.
And once again, that is one hundred percent the likelihood of harm, ul- ultimate resulting harm and impacts on public health and safety is one hundred percent.
That that is correct.
Commissioner Randolph? Oh, so, Mr. Monteleone, just just to be clear, in in every instance, you wouldn't necessarily need a site plan, but given the uh complexity of this intersection, in order to make an assessment, you would need, you would need more information than's been provided.
Absolutely, that that is correct, because this is not a a standard practice, this is a very short distance between an internal driveway and the driveway leading out to a a state road.
So we're we're not saying that in every case you need a site plan, but in this case, given the conditions.
Well, let me, let me, let me put it this way, if you were to, if you had a clean s- uh slate, a clean site, you would never design it to be like this. The only reason why it's being designed this way is because of the lack of uh of a of a of an another alternative way to get to the site.
Yeah, and the the engineer, traffic engineer for the applicant testified that the sightlines required this driveway to be where it is because if it was any further to the south on Black Rock
Way from the
I'm sorry, any further to the to the uh west on Black Rock Turnpike, it would be unsafe from a sightline perspective.
Commissioner Crystal?
And and Mr. Monteleone, just for the for the record, um based on what you're able to see um on the conceptual uh plan, is there any change that could be reasonably made that would address the concerns that you raised?
Uh ba- based on the way that the site is configured, no. If you could move it another sixty feet or seventy or eighty feet away, then 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 yeah, but that's not possible because you have uh an existing um parking lot there.
Mr. Monteleone, did you find other inconsistencies in the traffic report?
Um, one, one thing with the analysis of the site driveway is that the applicant used um, I believe it was point nine six peak hour factor for all directions of of travel, um which, which is not consistent with what the traffic counts showed. Um, we did it in a separate analysis, independent analysis of it um and found that the operation of the intersection was worse than what the applicant was was showing, but it didn't rise to the level of a of a traffic impact.
But that's, but that's an open issue to be analyzed, is that correct?
Yes.
So that would need to get, so conceptually, this, the concept is an error and needs to be reworked, is that?
Yeah, but but it was, it was only the inters- intersection itself with Black Rock Turnpike that was analyzed, not the internal the internal roadway.
I got it.
So 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 the, so the, so the, the synchroanalysis is, shows a very um standard um four-way intersection with Black Rock Turnpike, it doesn't in any way show how this this um secondary access road is so close to the to the main intersection. Um that that's that, yeah, that's that's hard to, that's hard to model, um
So conceptually, so once again, conceptually, this fails as it's proposed?
Right, right.
Okay, and did you try to ver- uh once again, I know I may have touched on this, but forgive me, but you were unable to verify the sightline distances, is that correct?
That that's correct, because um there was no, no map that was provided with the sightline on a, on a um on a scale drawing.
Okay.
It mentioned distances in the report, but it did not show the actual sightline, so we don't know where they measured it from, how, where the stop bar is being proposed, and 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 how far back from the uh the um the stop bar, they had the uh, the the uh, the driver's eyes.
That that's something that in reasonable practice would be provided on a drawing for review by the commission peer review.
That's correct, because we like to look at that, not just look at the distances, but look at the, at at the line to see if it crosses over other properties, if it, if it crosses um any, any vegetation, uh shrubbery or trees or anything else that could impact the uh the site of the of the driver as they, as they enter or as they exit the um the site.
Okay, I don't know if the commission has further questions.
Uh if you're done, that's fine, I actually wouldn't mind interrupting you for one thing, because I can see already now an issue with this. Can I have Attorney Ellis, can Attorney Bellis, can you please come up, because I I'm sensing an issue already, if we've referenced the documents, I remember longer, what you just described as a reasonable, well, he there is an another alternative, I think, Attorney Bellis, that you provided. there is another alternative, I think, Attorney Bellis, that you provided, well, I thought you had provided, but I think it was at least referenced, that had a, I'll do this for the benefit of, of this, longer kind of elongated turn into the site, right?
You are correct.
All right, and I thought that was gonna be put into the record and it sounds like that it was not.
So what, what Jason Edwards was testifying to was the fact that he is preparing a final site plan and that this particular intersection, or driveway we'll call it, curb cut is going to change on the final site plan.
All right, so, okay.
And that, he was showing you that loop that you were referring to.
But was there, there was a document, though, that he was referring to, I think?
He, he's working on a final site plan and he was showing you his work in progress of what he was working on.
Yeah, I just thought I had said, because we were talking about conceptual at the time, that I, I wanted that, since it was referenced in the record for essentially this reason. So that people can review it, that's what people were gonna go with.
Well, I know, well, I'll, I'll get to it. He is, this is not a final site plan.
I know, I know, but we're, we're, I don't know, we're in the world of conceptual stuff, but this is kind of what I correct me if I'm wrong, I, I just thought I had asked for that to be put into the record.
If you did, I, then I, I.
And I'm sorry if I missed it myself, I don't recall either.
But I, I can certainly put it into the record.
I think it needs to be.
Yeah.
Because.
I'm not saying, I, I thought you had wanted and perhaps I gave her the wrong drawing, I gave her the topo map.
All right, because that's, because now, you know, this, we went off of this and I remember them going longer and I, I don't know if it would have led to anything different, but I feel like that needs to be provided.
It's not a problem.
Well, I mean.
It's not a final site plan, though.
I, I understand, it's conceptual.
Yeah, conceptual.
Living, we're living in the world of conceptual right now.
Yes, there was a conceptual site plan, not prepared by the Huntington Group, but prepared by Jason Edwards, that he showed the commission what he's working on.
I know, it's just, that's what I needed in the record, because you know, they, they have an expert, you know, they're, you know where they're going, you've, you've listened to their thing.
I, I, I know what you want.
Yeah, I need that in the record, but I need to give them time to review it.
That's fine.
As long as you're okay with that.
I am.
Okay.
It's just not final, that's.
I, I.
I don't want to make that reputation.
Got it. All right, so I was kind of afraid when I heard that, I thought it was just me. That's what it is, I don't have to tell you. Put it in the record for you to take a look at, I don't know what else to do.
Mr. Chairman, when does the record close?
When I close it, I guess, but when, when does it need to, I guess?
So we have a deadline to close this public hearing by September sixth.
So we have time to rectify this.
Coming through rebuttal?
Well, he, I wanted it, because he referenced it in his, his initial presentation, it should have, it's not gonna come in through rebuttal, it should have gone in there, which would have given them time to review it.
But it didn't.
I know that, but it should have. And I don't recall, and I'm not gonna say that I, I just don't recall one way or the other. So it's not, I don't have to go down that route, but the answer is, the simple response is, it should have and it wasn't. And now I have to kind of move back, so to speak, to get the public comments back in line with, with the evidences. Does that make sense, Attorney Green?
Uh, I guess.
I mean, it's not ideal, don't get me wrong, but man, that's, that's, that's why I can kind of do it as far as procedurally. All right, so we have, that's an open issue for Mr. Monteleone and for you, but let's, I guess.
Well, is there, is the site plan only altering the driveway or is it altering other portions of the site?
Not a site.
Conceptual site.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, I just don't recall. Sorry, so I, I, I guess that leads to another kind of major thing is, what are you gonna do with the rest? I know, yeah, that's a fair point. Attorney Bellis, do we have that? Do you have that, access to that? Conceptual site plan?
My, my engineer has it.
Okay, but we don't have it tonight.
Basically do not.
All right. Yeah, I don't want you to, all right. I'll leave, I mean, I, I would think the best thing to do is to go forward while we can, if that's, knowing that there's something out there.
Can we ask Attorney Bellis if there are other changes?
That's what I'm trying to understand before I.
He'll plan beyond.
Attorney Bellis, as best as we know, when we were, when we were talking about that, would you come up, just so I can check?
It was Mr. Edwards online.
Yeah.
All right, when Mr. Edwards was referring to that, was it solely because of the driveway, if you recall? Well, he was gonna do a new site plan completely.
He's gonna do a new site plan completely.
For?
For wetlands and for the zoning commission. There'll be called a final.
It's gonna be for that, but purposes of this, it was only for elongated driveway.
He was showing you elongated driveway, I think he was showing you where the buildings may be adjusted slightly to put galleys or whatever, in the back behind there, those are stormwater drainage galleys, and there was talk that depending on what wetlands does, that the clubhouse could move, and then we talked about that.
So I guess the question I have is this then, Attorney Bellis, should we be going forward with what we have currently? And that means that elongated driveway is gonna be not part of the record at this point, because, or do you want to put this new site plan in in your initial application for this?
I have no problem, I'm, I'm not trying to hide the ball, I have no problem putting whatever you think you need to help you make this decision into the record and what he was trying to show you, so I don't have an objection to putting in Jason Edwards conceptual site plan. I don't.
But, man, but I don't think it's, matter of whether or not you have an objection, but as a commission, we need to move this forward. I only have this closing hearing on September sixth, and if there's more changes than simply the driveway, then that has to reopen the ability for the public, Attorney Green and others in the public to then comment on every other aspect that's changed, so that's really the question. It's not a matter of whether you object to it or not, is what are you looking to do? Because we need to plan accordingly. We need to schedule accordingly and plan the sequence of.
You know how this works, I mean, the evidence, initial presentation, the evidence is up here and then we kind of just kind of work there, anytime we go outside of that, and we're down in the public comment area, I gotta reopen it, so to speak. Public comments, then review all the evidence, so this is your, I mean, it's your application.
He did put it forwards, he did, he, he did testify to it and he was here, it was presented, remember?
And I, yes, I, I.
So I think all I have to do is, is actually put the drawing in.
I think we would be.
Upload the drawing.
I, I, and this is up to you, because again, this is your presentation, application, excuse me, or your applicant's application. I would think the way to handle this is not a site plan that potentially changes everything else, if you're move, comfortable moving forward with what you currently have, then maybe a conceptual drawing of this elongated driveway, which I think addresses what he was testifying to at the time.
I can do that.
All right, so not, not the new site plan at all, I mean, I would take it, put it in different documents.
Like this.
Kind of like that, yeah, I mean, it could be.
I know what you're saying.
All right.
I can do that.
All right.
So it'll just be the one that he was testifying off of. But no more than.
No more than that, I'm, I'm only focused on the driveway.
I know where you're focused.
All right, because if it's gonna be extra stuff.
There's not gonna be extras.
All right, because that's.
Can't work.
Well, I mean, potentially, yeah, I mean, because it's all.
How about, it's just, and I'm not, and I'm not playing hide the ball either, but in order to keep this kind of discreet and to this point, can't, this, maybe they can just create a drawing that shows how it varies.
That's what he's asking, right?
Well, yeah, I mean.
That's it. That's it.
Want something that's like, based on that or just?
Yeah, I don't care if it's, he doesn't have to superimpose it on this, basically, it's this area.
Can you? Do you have a copy of this?
I'll be able to get that to Jill.
All right, so just keep it within the footprint of what this is showing, and this is on the record?
Yes.
All right, so keep it into the.
I didn't put this in. I think it's in the.
We'll scan that in, that was, it's an excerpt of what we have on file, but we can scan that in specifically.
So let's, let's put this into the record now. You have an extra copy?
Yeah, it's.
Okay, so put that into the record, please.
Yeah.
Attorney Bellis, though, just keep it within the footprint of this.
Hundred percent.
It's better, thank you, okay. Everything else?
I think I have a copy, let me grab that. You can have this one. Here, maybe you gave it to me?
Yeah, just take one here, because I think there's actually, okay, so I think, I think that then solves.
We can go forward.
At the very least, we're just dealing with a discrete issue.
That's it.
Okay, that's it.
Then, then I can finish my presentation by understanding. Yeah, because there's anything else.
Exactly. Commissioner Randolph?
Oh, I got it, it's fine.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The complexity, I, I have, just for the record, I have expertise in this area of traffic engineering and the geometry of entryways. For the record, we would need to determine the general safety, not the specific safety, a detailed analysis of this intersection. It is very irregular. Mr. Bellis, I'm talking to you.
Hold on, hold on, let's, let's listen.
Yeah, but.
I know, I know where you're coming from.
My request is that we have enough information to determine the safety. The information at this level is not, does not give me, as someone with a high degree of expertise in this area, any indication of the safety of this. It is incomplete. So I'm just, this, since we're talking about reopening the record, which is highly irregular, my experience.
Well.
Yeah, I'm.
I'm not reopening the record, I'm trying to get the record back on track, so to speak.
But the record is what we have.
Yeah, except that he's already addressed this already in the initial presentation. So in the record, and the problem was
The drawing didn't make it.
The drawing wasn't put in place for the public, so I, listen.
So it's just a matter of adding that, that drawing?
All right, it's just a matter of adding the drawing that he referenced, and I would just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I, I understand where you're coming from, but I said what all I need to say about what I think needs to be done.
But no, this highlights the problem, conceptual site plan, the commission having to make.
Well, that's fine, but I don't wanna, what I didn't want really was to make a commentary about that at this point, because that's kind of more of a conclusory thing that we're gonna do at the end, that's why, and I didn't mean to cut you off, but that's kind of where I don't want to go down that route yet, because I think people have already expressed that unease and you know, Attorney Bellis has mentioned as far as what his position is as far as legality of it, so let's not, like I said, let's just get the record on as back on track as, reflect what their initial presentation is. I think that's good.
So the only thing going forward that the applicant is going to submit is that drawing and that I can receive.
You can receive everything else, yes.
Everything else is based on, it's on the town website and the record.
Attorney Bellis, is there something?
Yeah, I, well, my rebuttal, I, I had you had, there were requests, and I think they're uploaded, so I don't, already uploaded, so I the updated SLR report, that was requested with the, with the new developments being coming online, that was, that was requested of us.
That was requested of us, that was.
Requested me to do it and we did it.
I don't see that. See it on the website.
It is, on the website.
Yeah, it is there, and, and then there was a request, sure which one of you, I don't think it was any of you, someone else, requested a aerial view to show the distance to the Merritt Parkway, that's uploaded as well.
That was Commissioner Collins, I think.
Yeah.
Or Seabird.
So I'm responding to what Commissioner's asked me to do.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine.
I uploaded, so other than the, these, these were the two documents.
Okay, that's fair.
I, I don't want.
No, no, I appreciate that, no surprise idea behind it, so I appreciate that, it's uploaded.
It's uploaded.
It's more just a, a record of, of reflection of where it is versus the Merritt.
Yeah.
SLR, okay, fine.
These documents are dated yesterday, and I know earlier today, these were not on the website.
You would.
Well, I mean, they were requests by us, so you've got the benefit of we'll add that into what you're able to review, I guess, I mean, that's okay.
I did it as soon as I got it.
No, it's fine, so let's, let's leave it at that, I mean, you know about it now, Attorney Green. One of them, again, is more just location of where the Merritt is, that is what it is. SLR, I haven't looked at himself yet, so. Okay, thank you, Attorney Bellis.
So, so this, I guess, having not seen that before, my only comment on that is that it doesn't appear to account for the pending application involving expansion of the High Ho area.
I mean, what I would say is that, I mean, let's see where we go with what your, what your is, what your remaining is, and we'll see where we are with rebuttal. At the very least, you're gonna come back one, obviously, with this new drawing, you have other comments with the two additional things, fine.
That would be fair, I appreciate that.
So anything else with rebuttal, well, you're gonna have a.
I'm gonna, yeah. I'm, I'll make my presentation, and my understanding is the only items that I may address are the revised foot, that small footprint drawing.
Driveway, yeah.
Driveway and those two drawings which weren't on the website. Middle of the day today.
No, let's worry about that, yeah.
We have loaded them, but I, I have to admit, I don't know what time it was, so I don't know what time you looked versus what time we uploaded them.
I can't imagine it's gonna be, like I said, the drive, the location from the Merritt Parkway and then SLR is what it is.
All right, if, if there's an issue, I'll.
That'd be fine, thank you.
Uh, okay, next, Wes Haynes. Mr. Monteleone, I think we're all set for the moment and with
We are.
The chair's permission, I'd like to excuse him.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Monteleone.
Uh, next is Wes Haynes.
Good evening. I'm Wes Haynes, I'm a resident of twenty-two Brightside Drive, Stanford, Connecticut. I'm a historic preservation specialist, former executive director of the Merritt Parkway Conservancy, and I'm here to talk about the visual qualities of the Merritt Parkway that would be impacted by this development.
And Mr. Haynes, can you just briefly describe your education, training and experience for the record?
I have a master's in historic preservation from Columbia University and now fifty years' experience in the field of historic preservation, identifying historic resources, listing them on the national and state registers of historic places and doing planning for their preservation and rehabilitation.
And you mentioned in your introduction that you were formerly the executive director of the Merritt Parkway Conservancy, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so you are intimately familiar with the Merritt Parkway and the Conservancy?
Yes, part of my job responsibilities for the six years I was executive director was to drive the Parkway once a month to examine what was going on on the shoulders, and I became very familiar with every bridge and every landscape moment on the Parkway.
And and you're also familiar with this particular intersection involving Black Rock Turnpike and Merritt Parkway, is that correct?
Yes, I am, and prior to first the development of the High Ho and then subsequently the development of what is now the Hartford Healthcare Facility, this was one of the most beautiful untouched stretches of the Parkway that, that existed. This site has been of concern, the particular site of, of the, the proposed development of forty-two twenty-one Black Rock has been of concern for a long time, and it was actually used in an illustration for our predecessor, the Save the Merritt movement to illustrate what an unwelcome development would look like. It was such a pristine site that, that it was in, became the poster child of a movement that that led to the, the designation of the Merritt Parkway as a listing on the National Register of Historic Places, and it's also recognition as a national scenic byway by the Federal Highway Administration.
And it is, the Merritt Parkway has tremendous historic significance then?
Yes, and the significance of the Parkway is twofold, both in terms of engineering, but, but more importantly today because of its scenic quality, it's a very unusual resource, because it is a Parkway, a linear park that is stitched into the landscape to, to create a naturalistic experience driving across the beautiful glaciated ridges of, of Fairfield County.
And, and did you, I'm sorry, you go ahead.
And the significance of the Parkway really is in its landscape and the importance of its scenic qualities, both from within the driving lanes viewed outwards and from within, from within the Parkway as you experience it driving along.
And you're familiar, you, you indicated you're familiar with the general topography of the approach from both directions to Black Rock Turnpike on the Merritt Parkway.
Yes, I am.
And it forms somewhat, something of a valley in that area, is that correct?
Yes, it's a, it's one of the more dramatic moments on the Parkway where you approach the Blackrock Turnpike exit from heading northbound, down a large, long dip in the road, and approaching it southbound on a shorter drop in, in the road towards the valley. You have expansive vistas in, in all directions.
How does that affect the visibility of the property at forty-two twenty-one Blackrock Turnpike from the Parkway?
Well, I, I disagree with the, one of the testimony at the previous meeting of the applicant, that the, the proposed development would not be visible from the Parkway. I believe that it will be highly visible from the Parkway, especially in the southbound lane as you approach the, the dip.
And is that also something that has affected seasonally?
Yes, the, the vegetative cover there is largely, largely deciduous. When the trees shed their leaves, it's going to be highly visible from both directions.
And have you reviewed the building designs and elevations and the site plans for the proposed development?
Yes, I have.
And have you reached any conclusions on the potential impacts of a project of that scale on the, on the Merritt Parkway and its historic character?
A, a project of, of, of this scale is going to be a highly unusual element on the Merritt Parkway. I believe that the height of the buildings and the mass of the buildings will all factor into the Merritt Parkway experience and not in a positive way. They will detract from the natural beauty of the Parkway. The buildings are just too large and too, too wide, and they're placed on a high promontory which will enhance their visibility from the Parkway, and negatively.
And to what degree, and in what way would they affect the historic character of the Parkway?
They'll detract from the historic quality and the, and the Parkway's scenic qualities.
And can you just tell me, Commissioner, a little bit more about that?
The Parkway, the, the built features on the Parkway were highly ornamental, the bridges that, that the Parkway is famous for are all individual works of art of, of the Art Deco movement, set within a very carefully planted vegetative cover, using mostly native species. These, these buildings will be an intrusion into that careful balance that provides what the Merritt Parkway Conservancy believes equitable access to beauty to all drivers on the Parkway.
And this site actually abuts the right-of-way at some points of the Merritt Parkway, is that correct?
That's correct.
And are you able to quantify the likelihood of harm to the historic resource?
It, if, if these buildings are built, there will be a hundred percent harm in this moment, in this, this place on the Parkway.
I have no further questions.
Sure, of course. Attorney Green, I, the thing that comes to mind with this piece of, of your presentation is comparison to Beach Road, and I know historic district is not the exact same thing as a, as the historic Parkway, but, I mean, the, what the court said about that, its decision strikes me as similar because of talked about the preserving the viewshed from a historic district, and the fact that that, it's not clear that that outweighs the need for affordable housing, how, I, how, certainly, what's your thoughts on, assuming you've thought about that, so.
First of all, that is a, the impacts on historic resources are recognized as something that the commission may consider when weighing the need for affordable housing with considerations of public health and safety, and that comes with environmental concerns. The Beach Road case is distinguishable because, first of all, there was property in between one thirty-one Beach Road and the bounds of the historic district, and another significant factor that was addressed by the applicant was the lack of visibility of the project from the historic district, so that was a, a fact that was in contention. And in this case, it is abutting, you may recall, I don't know if you had the pleasure of sitting on that application, but if you did, you would have noted that the applicant produced, for example, aerial drawings that showed the extensive commercial development along Beach Road and along Post Road, including on properties behind Beach Road, and drew an aerial, and this aerial photo showed high degree of commercial uses and developments which were visible, therefore suggesting that this was not that big an incursion in and of itself, and there was a large building next to it, and a tall building on the corner of Beach Road and Old Post Road, and the church, and then next to the church was, they obviously showed Green's Funeral Home and commercial development all up Beach Road. Here, this witness has testified that this area is unique because there are so few incursions into the viewscape of the Merritt Parkway, so therefore, this would be a dramatic, would have a dramatic impact on the historic character of the Parkway. Did I get that right, Mr. Haynes?
Yes, you did.
Hey, Bellis, let's let him finish, then we can discuss whatever.
No, I just wanted to ask two questions on cross-examination, but I thought he was done with his witness.
That's fine.
Hey, let, let Attorney Randolph, ah, Commissioner Randolph go, sorry.
So, Ms., Mr. Haynes, is, you, you've cited the visibility of this proposed development from Merritt as a, as a concern. There, there's been a number of other residential developments that have been going up along the Merritt and, and Trumbull and elsewhere, is there an ability to mitigate the intrusion, the visual intrusion by, through plantings?
Uh, there may be the ability to partially mitigate by conditioning the approval on some sort of planting scheme that could plant out the worst parts of, of the view towards these buildings, but not, but I believe that they're too high to fully be able to be planted out by, by vegetation.
I, I'm, I was a little unclear on your answer, so it could be the, the visual impact of these buildings could be mitigated through, through plantings, partially?
Partially, it could, it could reduce the, the impact, but it would still be a negative impact on the Parkway.
So the Parkway is thirty-three miles long?
Thirty-seven and a half.
So thirty-seven miles long, and I'll just state this for the commission, because we've had this discussion many, many, many times. This is a constant challenge for the Merritt Parkway Conservancy. We had this discussion with the Hartford Healthcare signage, we had it with Park Avenue, the fifty-five sixty-five Park Avenue project, and this is a constant struggle to maintain sort of this greenway and this, and avoid. I guess my point is, we can think of these instances, and they're dramatic, for example, when you're coming down towards Sikorsky, which is at the northern end of it, or Merritt Seven when you're going into the Route Seven dip, but these are dramatic exceptions. By and large, the Parkway is park-like. Mr. Haynes, you can jump in anytime on this, and, but the, the point is the Conservancy has just worked steadily opposing development along the Parkway for the very purpose of preserving it, and while we can all point to exceptions, the interesting part is, these are all like unique exceptions, because overall, you have miles and miles of park-like development, and while I understand that there are places where you can see residential homes and the trees, these are residential zones, they're not six-story, two, uh, six-story buildings with, you know, a massive sixty-eight units in each building that are six stories tall, four stories, two stories of parking built into a hill, coming down the Parkway when you're north, when you're southbound, looking right at it. I don't know how you could come up with a landscaping plan that would cover that seventy-foot height, is that? Mr. Haynes, do you have anything to add on that?
Yes, and, and just our, our experience with this commission, which we appreciated in reducing the scale, the approval of two other projects in their height, the project at Park Avenue was reduced by the, as originally proposed, was reduced by two stories, and it did drop the building down below the tree line, and it's largely covered three months of the, of three seasons of the year. The Hartford Healthcare Building, less successful perhaps, because there was, it was conditioned on planting it out, the, the plants have not gotten to a maturity yet, and the building is highly visible, but that was, the, the, there was a proposal on that site for a four-story building on top of structured parking, which was reduced to two stories, so reducing the height of these buildings is, is a possibility as well. And as, as Attorney Green said, this is a, a corridor-length battle, but it seems like Fairfield is ground zero right now of, of this development that's, that other municipalities seem to have had better control over.
Attorney Bellis?
Yes, Mr. Haynes, are you aware of any written site or view easements that protect the Merritt Parkway right-of-way to a particular view by restricting the use of structures? And are these documents recorded on the land records with respect to this site?
Uh, in answer to that, no, I'm not aware of it, but it is a strategy that the Parkway, the Merritt Parkway Conservancy has been working with DOT on a vegetation management plan that will protect the scenic byway aspect of the Parkway, is to, a strategy to initiate an easement program.
But as of today, there are no view easements?
As of today, I'm not aware of any.
Okay, and I think you, you did testify, so that in this particular location, one would be able, one, somebody driving on the Merritt Parkway, they would see the existing medical building and perhaps the existing High Ho sign and motel?
Yes, they would.
And that would be right where this particular building would be, so there would be three commercial buildings that you would be able to view if this were to be built?
That's correct, and it would, it would start to resemble the, the break that Attorney Green talked about in Norwalk, that we do not have any control over, it, those buildings went up before we were created and the National Register was created, and it's just gotten worse.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Attorney Green?
Uh, I have no further questions of this witness.
One last question, so I'm, I'm looking at the older site plan, and it looks like the ground elevation's about two hundred and fourteen feet, and the Merritt Parkway elevation is, like it's, I don't know, about one, it's less than one fifty, that's the lowest, hope I, what, what height would be satisfactory to reduce this building? How much, how many floors would you take off this building to reduce its visual intrusion?
Well, yeah, we'll start, let's start with, what is it currently? It's how?
Or I believe it's four stories over two park.
Right, Attorney Bellis, four stories over two parking, so about six stories, I think. Let's assume that for now. And I guess the question from Commissioner Randolph is, to the extent that you mentioned reducing height has been helpful in other areas, what would you reduce the height to mitigate, if there, if, if we had to mitigate by reducing the height, what would you reduce it to? Six to what?
Well, I, if that's a question for me, ideally, building one especially is going to be highly visible, and I believe our next witness is going to be able to talk, who's a, a landscape architect can talk more specifically about the, the heights, but I would say if we could take two stories off of building one and a minimum of one story off of the other ones, they would be less visible than they, they are right now, as proposed.
Okay, thank you. What you plan, or you referring to for building one, is the one we were looking at earlier?
On the site plan, building one.
The one that was previously given. Conceptual site, I guess. Dated, the hunting company dated eighteen?
October fifteen, two thousand and eighteen.
It's the only, it's the only one that's in.
Thanks. So I'm sorry, the landscape architect will address that more specifically.
Yep.
Mr. Haynes gave an answer, two stories off building one, one story off the other two buildings.
And just so we're clear, Mr. Haynes, building one is the building closest to Blackrock Turnpike?
Yes, that's correct.
I see, okay. Anything else? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Haynes. Next, I'd like to call Peter Viteretto.
You're letting me in, is that all right?
Yeah.
Peter Viteretta, I live down here in Norwalk, Connecticut. I am a graduate of the University of Connecticut's Architectural Landscape Program, been practicing landscape architecture for about forty years, I'm licensed in the state of Connecticut, as well as two other states in the District of Columbia. I'm the principal here at Heritage Landscapes, where we predominantly work on cultural landscapes, and many of our clients are municipalities, not-for-profits, National Park Service, and Architectural Capital. We're very familiar with the value of cultural landscapes and how they're important to our communities. And I think in this case, you know, I'm gonna follow on Wes's sort of, you know, a position where there is an extreme adverse impact by the proposed development on this site. When we talk about landscapes, we talk about the character of a landscape, and a landscape is sort of defined by spatial organization, by topography and grading, by circulation patterns, vegetation, and also by visual relationships and views and vistas. So the Merritt Parkway is really unique in the sense that it has all these things combined at a high level use, and here we're focused mostly on, you know, the views and the vistas and the impact that we'll see from this Parkway. If we go back a little bit, in thirty-eight, the sort of construct of the Parkway was to create this greenway and to improve the economy of lower Fairfield County. Green spaces improve economies generally by the nature of people wanting to be in these spaces, they're better for our communities and they have an economic return. So I say that because the Merritt Parkway is a thirty-eight-mile park, and it's important, and it's in, that we all sort of protect the construct and the reason why it's important, and how it can add value to any project that we propose along it. You know, so the development does impact the scenic quality by the introduction of these structures that, that really, you know, will detract from the scenic beauty, scenic beauty and that sense of a green corridor. You know, in my approach, I looked, you know, fairly, fairly generally at the elevations proposed on the conceptual site plans, so looking at the roof lines of buildings two and three, which are on top of the hill, they're up at about an elevation two eighty. In many cases, you know, there is the conservation zones directly between the Parkway and the, and the building proposed, but, you know, trees in general only get to about fifty, sixty feet, so when you're proposing buildings that are up at two eighty and they're on top of the hill, you're gonna see these things, you know, from the approaches on either side of the Parkway, and you're certainly gonna see them in the winter, when the trees drop leaf. Looking at aerials that were proposed in some of the submitted documents, that is a fully deciduous landscape, it will drop leaf, there's not many, if any, any evergreens in there, and that, and that responds to buildings two and three. Building one is particularly difficult, as Wes pointed out, it is not screened at virtually any level from the Parkway nor Blackrock Turnpike. If you look at the design and the location on, on the conceptual site plan, the building is standing just at the top of the Hartford, Hartford Healthcare Parking Lot, it's got about twenty-one foot of distance between the retaining walls, there's no opportunity to even provide us a buffer or planting in that location. So if we talk. So if we talk about the sort of proposed conceptual site plan, there is no concept that looks at how we manage the views and vistas from outside of the property. So if we're talking about concepts, the value of adding a concept that it is important not to see these structures and impede upon the visual relationship of the travelers on the Parkway or the Black Rock Turnpike, that, that conceptual project has to include the value of adding a landscape that is sustainable. And when I say sustainable, you cannot plant a mature landscape at twenty-one foot. So there is a system that is required that has to support the concept of landscape. And landscape is a noun, it's not a verb. Landscaping is not a few trees tucked into the line of the parking lot. Um, you know, it needs to be considered as part of the system of the proposed landscape, along with the grading, the topography, the whis, the driveways, and the view. So it is a larger concept than what I'm seeing in this, in this particular plan. And I think it's important for the commission to understand that the landscaping is not something that can be sprinkled a few trees on and be addressed lightly, and it's important to consider that when you approve the zoning change and moving forward to how this actual uh, project sits on the landscape itself. Because it is our responsibility to keep this lower corridor in Fairfield County, you know, green and important to us.
So, uh, you've identified this harm to the, to the viewscape. And can I interpret that to also be the historic character of the Parkway?
Absolutely.
And your likelihood of that harm occurring from this proposed development as it is conceptually proposed, in your opinion?
It, it will, it will adversely impact that, that value.
One hundred percent. That's a yes?
Yes.
I have uh, no further questions.
Commissioner Randolph? Um, thank you for your testimony and dedication to uh, the landscape. Is there, how could that? Our responsibility is to find out whether those issues could be reasonably mitigated. Um, what are your suggestions, if any, on how to reasonably mitigate the harm caused by, uh, to, to the, the cultural harm to the community caused by the, this visual intrusion?
To follow on Wes's sort of statements, the height is a, is a large issue. You know, one story down on, on the two and three and two on building one is, is a, is a large, would, would have a positive impact. Uh, the location of building one being so tightly, you know, at the frontage of the property where there is no opportunity to provide a greenscape in front of it. Uh, if you look at the topography, it's on top of a ledge just above, I think it's about a fifteen-foot drop from the retaining wall proposed on the conceptual plan to the existing parking lot. Uh, you know, even looking at the driveway proposal along the Black Rock Turnpike, uh, you know, you put a fifty-foot, that fifty-foot right-of-way with a thirty-foot travel way in there, there's very little room at all, given overhead utility lines and just general available soils to sustain any sort of landscape. So again, there are ways to mitigate it if you take the value of landscape at a, at a different level and understand that it's part of the design pr- process. Um, there's also the concept that it needs more evergreens to sort of dissuade the open visual landscape during the winter months, which is a significant part of our time. There is, there's ample, there's ample room, I believe that if I'm looking at the drawing, I've got two hundred and seventy foot of distance between the Parkway property and the first building or building three. Uh, that's a great deal of space that could be treated properly, uh, and look at addressing the visual, visual uh, uh, punctuations, you know, you know, in the four seasons, not necessarily just during the summer. So there are ways to look at mitigating this, and to the benefit of both the Parkway and the project, most likely.
Do you concur with the reduction in the height of the buildings then?
Yes.
Point on that, as Wes Haynes said?
Absolutely.
And are those the same metrics that you would apply?
Uh, the metric being about eight to ten foot per story, yes. Bringing those uh, top buildings down by ten foot would help, you know, to sort of get them under the maturing canopy line.
And building one, he had suggested two floors off building one, so that?
That, that would be a, a best, that would be a good scenario to look at because of the slopes going down. Everything falls away from the topography, from the crest of the building with three, right down to the Black Rock Turnpike. So it is highly visible and it, it pokes out of the landscape in that location. Two stories would make a huge difference.
What was the distance between the Merritt Parkway and the building again?
Uh, it's on, on the conceptual site plan, it's two hundred and seventy feet. We use two hundred foot as a good distance for buffering landscapes. So we have the room there, some of it is the um, conservation area. So protecting that as a buffer and sub- and making it substantially more, um, you know, viable as an ecological system is, is, would be an approach.
Commissioner Randolph, sorry. So we, we're, um, I, I, this is a, an open-ended question, but we're in a little bit of a bind here, because we're not, it's ambiguous whether we need site plan. But in order to create that type of buffer, what would be your suggestion to assure that uh, that type of buffer is created absent a landscaping plan?
The, the concept that you're looking to buffer the Parkway by the maintenance of a two hundred foot wide or wider uh, vegetated buffer that includes evergreens, um, you know, is a good start. So there has to be, so I, I say in the concept level, the concept that that type of landscape buffer is valued um, is where I, I, I suspect we would, you know, be able to sort of keep that into the conceptual site plan. Because it's not really, it's not really part of the plan here. I mean, right now, we're, we're planning to stay out of the conservation areas, but the concept of providing a buffer is not introduced. So that alone is valued.
Anything else?
Uh, I have no further questions.
And understanding that landscapes require a system of soils and water to keep them, you know, in situ. You know, and that's something we often forget about.
Thank you. Well, so.
No, no questions.
Thank you, yeah. Also, thank you.
Uh, and may, is this witness excused at this point?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, so on this area, uh, arm to the federally recognized historic resource, that is the Merritt Parkway, uh, section eight dash two requires zoning regulations to be made with reasonable consideration as to the character of the district and to promote the conservation of historic places and historic areas. That's in eight dash two. Now, I can predict that Attorney Ballas is going to get up and he's going to say, well, this is an eight dash thirty G application, so sort of regulations or requirements don't apply. Eight dash thirty G supersedes that. I disagree with that. And one of the central themes to our presentation is that this does not qualify as an eight dash thirty G application, so I'm still gonna.
Because it's just a conceptual plan.
Correct.
That's why, just want to make sure I understand.
So, um, I'm also gonna, and again, I, I know what the rebuttal will be, but um, it is inconsistent with the two thousand and sixteen Plan of Conservation and Development. This is within the Greenfield Hill uh, District. And uh, once again, eight dash two requires that zoning regulations be made in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And uh, it is inconsistent. And uh, it's incompatible with the vision for Greenfield Hill. The P O C D identifies Greenfield Hill as one of Fairfield's most low-density rural and historically significant neighborhoods. And uh, the plan that is in place right now calls for maintaining the unique and historic form and discourages new development that would diminish the rural feel and scenic qualities. Um, and obviously, scale and intensity and bulk of these buildings would be totally antithetical to that. It threatens historic and scenic resources as we've just presented. It conflicts, uh, I guess, uh, there are obviously traffic and the infrastructure concerns that we've identified, and these are also, um, the P O C D highlights the importance of maintaining the function and safety of Fairfield's roadways, particularly in rural areas not designed uh, with hilly topography and limited sightlines. And this would obviously uh, be antithetical to that. And so, uh, uh, once again, and just to not go too deeply into this, it is contrary to the P O C D. And we've talked about the traffic uh, and impact assessment and the infirmities and that, and I guess we're gonna, I wa- I'm not gonna finish that now because I want to see. So I want to just take a few moments and talk to you about uh, the text amendment as it's proposed. I've printed out uh, the amended text amendment. This was, once again, the last version that I saw online, so I hope it is. All right. So, uh, while we're on this topic, uh, I want to just, uh, we feel that obviously this application should be denied, but I just want to highlight some, well, just in the alternative, some potential revisions to regulation for the commission to consider. As I set the table for that, first, uh, in five point five point one point two, that is on the first page, uh, it provides that this Black Rock Affordable District, and I'll call it a BRAD, uh, as they put the acronym up there, shall be in full compliance with all the requirements of this regulation as well as eight dash thirty G. So that is one of the premises, the purpose and intent, is having it be consistent with both. And it's, uh, obviously it references that in five point five point one four. Again, it references eight dash thirty G. And in a few other passages, it uh, refers to these regulations and eight dash thirty G. When we get to the last pa- uh, page five, before they get into the property description. Uh, I'd like to suggest some revisions that the commission can write in on their uh, plan. First of all, uh, to, to be clear and to avoid any contrary issues, and this is under standards for site plan approval. Final site plan certified by a civil engineer or should be signed and certified by a civil engineer and land surveyor shall be separately filed, and I want it to be clear, shall be separately filed with the commission. Because, again, the commission can create this regulation, it should be submitted to the Plan and Zoning Commission for review. And not just, for example, submitting a site plan to the building department or any other agency. And it would be after the text amendment and zone change is approved. Uh, uh, if it complies with the regulation. And then it says and/or, and it should be to be consistent with the rest of the regulation. It shouldn't be an or, an and/or, because this regulation merely contemplates that any site plan must uh, comply with both uh, eight dash thirty G and this regulation. Uh, the next sentence is troubling to me, and I'm going to leave it to the commission. Uh, but the final site plans shall be, and it says substantially the same as attached site plans exhibit B. And B appears to be, once again, this two thousand and eighteen drawing, but it says substantially the same. And then it says, unless the Wetlands Commission requires changes to the site plans and building locations. Well, problem with that is, first of all, this commission may be ceding sort of your authority on site plan review to the Inland Wetlands Commission, because what that suggests then is the Inland Wetlands Commission dictates the site plan at that. So what happens if it's unclear to me, it should be really the same. Uh, I'm not sure how you justify or, you know, sort of re- reconcile what happens if inland wetlands makes major changes that you were not necessarily satisfied with? Does that mean the site plan is still valid? Uh, I don't know, but I'll leave that to the commission and maybe with the advice of the town attorney to wrestle with. Now, because this is an eight dash thirty G application, and the applicant keeps suggesting that the regulation and the, the development must be in full compliance with uh, with uh, eight dash thirty G. I would suggest that this commission add a section five point five point thirteen. So last paragraphs, we were dealing with under standards for site plan approval. We're under five point five point twelve. I would suggest that the commission add a five point five point thirteen. And five point five point thirteen, in accordance with eight dash thirty G, would be no site plan. I would call five point five point thirteen, I would call it moratorium. And what I would do is put in the regulation, no site plan shall be approved pursuant to this regulation while a moratorium is in place pursuant to section eight dash thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes. So what that means is the regulation says that, yes, we'll do all these things, we adopt these standards, but you can't present a site plan while the moratorium is in place.
And that would mean even now?
Even now.
I, I just want to understand where you're in, where the.
Because, uh, once again, I don't buy this application process, and I'm, I'm not sure, we'll see where this goes. But everything is consistent with eight dash thirty G in this regulation. And eight dash thirty G provides for a moratorium. So I would suggest that as part of this regulation, it would be within the purview of eight dash thirty G for this commission in adopting a regulation pursuant to eight dash thirty G to adopt language that says that you don't have to approve the final site plan while the moratorium is in place. And I have that sentence, if you'd like it. If you give the text. And and uh, what I'm going to do now is I have a, I'm not, I'm gonna, missions, permission, I will rest now pending uh, getting the final plan, and I'll do a very, very short time after this.
What do you, I mean, wrap up on what though?
Just, uh, just conclusory remarks. I don't think, I'm not gonna take up any more time.
And I wouldn't mind the conclusory remarks now, and just limiting to the, the, the uh, your next, your next part to the traveling access, just so we can be.
Whatever the Parkway drawings, whatever that.
That you docked.
Traffic, yeah, that's fine. So, look, I, well, let me just, I'll just. Um, I, I think, uh, we've made the record that, uh, I think we've covered all of, um, the matters that we need to, the proposed zoning text amendment and the redevelopment, it's incompatible with the neighborhood, the natural environment, historic character of the Parkway. We've shown that the concept subject to whatever is submitted, the cons- the concept fails on traffic. And again, it is conceptual, but the concept can't be sustained. I mean, it, it doesn't work with that layout. And we would suggest that it can never work the way the site is configured for this development. Uh, it, the application undermines the integrity of our zoning framework, ignores key statutory requirements under eight dash two, eight dash three, and eight dash thirty G. And basically, there's irreparable harm to nationally protected historic site. We'll get into environmental issues maybe sometime. Their safety risks, their procedural deficiencies, the drawings upon which the concept is based are once again unsigned, unsealed, by their terms, they're not valid. And uh, subject to my comments. subject to my comments on traffic the next session. I urge the commission to deny the application. I would ask that we, when does the commission contemplate that we would be back on this? Would it be?
I mean, it could very well be next week.
But can we at least get? I have to get that drawing to Mr. Monteleone, you know, before the end of the week, if we're gonna do it next Tuesday.
I was hoping, you know, Dr. Terry Bellis, if he can get it to you by tomorrow or Thursday the latest, it's just, can you get it to?
Tomorrow, Thursday? Tomorrow's Thursday.
Tomorrow's Wednesday. Alright, so can you get it to him by Thursday? Sunday, Thursday?
That's mine.
Okay.
We can do.
If there's an issue, let us know.
Great. And as always, thank you for your patience.
Joel, is that the hot seat?
Well, hold on, I got the rest of the public here. I gotta go through them.
You do?
I do. Well, no, I gave him the option.
I'm sorry.
No, that's right. I just, I just wanna see if there's anybody else. So, let me see, last we spoke, again, some people, I think, members of the public spoke last time. Like I said, I wouldn't like any duplication if we can, but are there any members of the public who didn't speak last week that wish to be heard? Wow, I'm sorry. Attorney Green was pretty thorough, but, but up. And any member of the public who's joining us remotely, if you can please sign in in the chat chart and just identify if you want to be heard on this application. If you can just give your name and address, keep the comments remain to the issues. Members of the public, keep it to three minutes.
My name is George Harrington. I live at ninety-three Rolling Ridge Road. Excuse me, in Fairfield. This is about a block and a half off Black Rock Turnpike by San Motor Lake. I'd like to pull us out of the weeds on traffic. We're talking a lot about that intersection around Black Rock Turnpike and Merritt Parkway. I wanna talk about the entire neighborhood. This is a two-lane state road, and I will correct my written document from this afternoon and say it goes east and west. I say it goes north and south. But it is two-lane from the Merritt Parkway all the way to San Motor Drive. The traffic today, as was admitted by the expert last week, backs up from Tamar Drive, San Motor Lake, late in the afternoon, all the way to the Gulf Gas Station. Going in the evening, or in the morning, the other direction, it backs up from the Merritt Parkway almost down to Rock Ribs Road at the base of My Street. We are talking about adding several hundred apartments. Traffic density in this area is already nearly unmanageable. The roads that access Black Rock Turnpike, such as Nona Pole and Creekanoff and Rock Ribs, it's very difficult during these peak hours to get in and out of that road. And we're gonna make that situation significantly worse. I don't know how you, as a commission, deal with multiple projects and which one gets to be the straw that breaks the camel's back. But one of these projects is gonna be the straw that breaks the camel's back for the traffic density and safety of that entire neighborhood. People coming south in my direction down Black Rock Turnpike to the Merritt that encounter this now go up Congress Street and they go down Joan Drive, Surrey Lane, and they come down Burr Street to get down into town. Where I live, I go the other way to avoid Black Rock Turnpike, and I now drive up through residential neighborhoods. All of that traffic density is gonna make this whole neighborhood almost untenable. My second comment is with regard to the sewers. An Adian sewer coming down from Greenfield Hunt. And I understand these three projects intend to tie into that. And that sewer line goes down Black Rock Turnpike, under Crickerbrook, becomes twelve inch through that neighborhood, under Milltown River at the head of San Motor Lake, before it goes through the Tamar Drive neighborhood and then runs down through the lake bottom of San Motor Lake, which I know well, because I negotiated the easement with John Sullivan to allow that to happen. These projects are gonna inundate that sewer system. And I don't know how you, as a commission, look at the aggregate of all of this. Can you compel one of these applicants to do a holistic study, both of traffic and of sewers, to determine the aggregate impact of all these projects put together? But I do think you have a responsibility to the citizens of the town to look at this thing in its totality and make judgments based on the aggregate impact of all these projects. Thank you.
Any other member of the public?
I know that you said don't get two bites of the thing, but there are two more items that I couldn't get in my three minutes that I would like to add.
Maybe a minute, if that's okay.
I think I can do it in a minute. My name is Russell Jennings. I live at five twenty-five Winnebago Drive. Your expertise is more than mine. I'm not aware that school buses are allowed to drive into private developments. And if that is so, you're gonna have a hundred and twenty two-bedroom apartments in this complex. And there might be fifteen, twenty, twenty-five children getting on a school bus that is stopped on Black Rock Turnpike, getting them to load. And the traffic studies don't come up with any issues of that. Secondly, the heights of these buildings are near the height of Hemlock Reservoir. Will there be enough water pressure to get sufficient service to the upper apartments in these buildings? And will there be enough water pressure for the firefighters should there be an emergency there?
Thank you. Hit it on the dot.
I did radio in college.
Any other member of the public in person? I'll see if anybody's interested, but.
So that's sent on this afternoon, three letters.
Any member of the public joining us remotely? See anybody? I'll just give a general call. If any member of the public wishes to be heard that's joining remotely, if you can please identify yourself by raising your digital hand, if you look to the bottom of your, bottom of your toolbar, there should be a raise hand function. Identify yourself so we can see you and get you able to. You're not gonna be able to do so unless you digitally raise your hands. Any member of the public in person or joining remotely wishes to be heard? Again, if you're joining remotely, look to the bottom of your toolbar, look to the raise hand function, so you can identify yourself to us, please. Not hearing anybody or seeing anybody, I'll close the public comment subject to what we discussed with Attorney Green. Terry Bellis?
Yes, sir.
Battle.
Won't be the quickest gentleman, but I'll try my best.
Thank you.
I just wanted to state on the record that at the commission's request, there was a request that an aerial map be provided and to show how far away the closest building, which I think is building three, is to the Merritt Parkway. I've given that to Emmeline, and we've uploaded that. And it shows it to be four hundred fifty-five feet, the closest building. I hope you have that. The commission asked, I'm not sure which commissioner, I'm sorry, whether there would be an updated S L R report because of the additional developments that either were approved or possibly could be approved. And so that S L R report was dated August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. And I'm not gonna read through the whole thing, but basically, it made the conclusion that even with those additional developments, specifically four one eight oh Black Rock, four four eight oh Black Rock, and fourteen seventy-seven Congress, that the results would be similar, that there would be no significant impact, and all analysis intersections will operate at a very good level of service during both peak hours.
I think that was me, actually, wasn't it?
I'm sorry?
I think that was me, asked for that, just to get.
Oh, maybe it was you.
Yeah, to get the tally.
Yeah, I think it was you now that you mentioned it. So that's why I did that. Okay. Joel handed me five point five one three. I don't agree with that. I would have it dead on arrival, so my position is no, I don't agree to that reasonable change. I don't think it's reasonable. Let me, let me just do a little bit, I was trying to, I didn't bring my statutes or regulations, but I found it. Let me start with conceptual site plans, okay? So conceptual site plan, the statute. Any commission, by regulation, may require that an affordable housing application seeking a change of zone, we're doing here, include the submission of a conceptual site plan describing, quote, "proposed development's total number of residential units." "Their arrangement on the property." "And the proposed development's roads and traffic circulation." "Sewage disposal and water supply." Those have been given to you. That's from the statute. Now I'm gonna read from the regulation.
What's the site for the rec? I don't want to be forgotten.
The rec?
Yeah.
I think the regulation, I think the regulation is eight dash thirty G seven.
Yeah, they always, the regulations, state statutes follow the regulations, follow the statute with an extra dash.
I'm gonna just read a portion of it. I'm not reading the whole regulation. But it says, "A commission, by regulation, may require that an affordable housing application that petitions for a rezoning of the property, that is the subject of the application, shall be accompanied by a conceptual site plan. Any such regulation, however, shall not require the submission of the type of plans, studies, calculations, or similar detailed information that will otherwise be required in connection with site development, subdivision or re-subdivision plans, which, when approved, will serve as the basis for the issuance of a building permit." So both the stat, my position is both the statute and the regulation allows a commission, which the mission has done, to provide for conceptual site plans that are not as detailed as you would get to get a building permit. And I know there's other cases out there. I'm just drawing a blank. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna state the wrong case, but there are cases that talk about whether that it's feasible and the reason developers do the conceptual site plans would be to save cost. It could be things like, in this case, that you have a moratorium. But they talk about that there's absolutely, they're permitted as far as the zone change and text amendment is concerned. Now, I've always said it, and I've said it, I think the chair has recognized it. Yeah, I'm gonna come back with a site plan, and yes, it's gonna be reviewed under eight thirty G standards.
In the extent that we made that more explicit than it may otherwise be.
And then I tried, if I, putting into my regulation that the conceptual site plans will look, I use the word substantially the same as what I provided, you know. Maybe I'm not that articulate, I don't know. What I was trying to do was to help the commission by saying, okay, this is what I'm showing you all. I can't come in now with one building in the building, in the middle, that looks like the Empire State Building. It's not substantially the same as what I'm showing you. However, if this building has to move two feet because of wetlands, well, I consider that substantially the same. It's three buildings, you know. So that's what I was trying to do in the text amendment. If you can think of better words, I'm okay with it, but I was, I was doing it to protect the commission so that you didn't get me saying one thing, and likely I'll be the attorney doing the site plan. But if I'm not, you know, you never know, someone comes in with something, you go, what the heck is that? That's what Steve showed me. That's why, that's why I wrote that, okay? If I didn't do it well enough, you can fix my verbiage, but that was the reason I put that in there. Just look at my notes. I think when you have an apartment built, no, I don't even think I know. When you have an apartment building over a hundred units, you have to go to O S T A. O S T A is what you were called. I think you guys were calling it Connecticut D O T. O S T A, so a hundred units or less, you do not have to go to O S T A. A hundred, more than a hundred units. And then there's other two, depending on parking spaces and whatever. But this is over a hundred, so you would have to go. So I think a lot of that intersection thing that you guys were worried about would have to get handled by, by, by O S T A. Secondly.
Well, in your mind, though, if there's a problem with the intersection that O S T A, I'll say, I'll say O S T A, but Connecticut D O T finds out, do they have the ability to deny the project? I mean, as you, I mean, you can, you gave the impression that you can go to O S T A to have them review the the traffic, the, and the intersection, kinda like, hey, there's an extra safeguard here.
Yeah.
But does that safeguard actually potentially lead to a denial somehow because there's a problem that they pick up that we don't?
I think it could.
Okay. So I don't know the answer to that one or the other. There are times we deal with.
We had this come up.
Did you guys?
Circle, circle, dial, circle in.
But the, what we had talked about then was the fact that O S T A essentially is not going to deny a project. They're going to find a way to make the best out of whatever the project is.
No, I think that's my recollection too. I was just asking him, like, what is, you know, this extra safeguard, what does that lead to?
If I may, as staff, I will give you one, Emmeline Harrigan, planning director for the record. I will give you one example, eighty-one Black Rock Turnpike, which this commission reviewed and approved, and then recently rereviewed for a modification to the building itself. And that owes to approval because it is, it meets the threshold as a review building. They needed explicit approval from the commission as to what was being approved prior to them granting approval. So, you know, I would say if, if there's not an approval granted by this commission, O S T A will not provide any permitting.
Well, yeah, that'd be, yeah.
That is true. I agree with the staff on that. All right, so my big, my big point, so my, I guess my rebuttal is that I think that the planning and zoning should approve the zone change and text amendment because it does comply with eight dash thirty G as a set-aside development. It's a maximum of two hundred and four units, which would require sixty-two affordable units. I think the apartment building is tucked behind the medical building, and it would be on approximately fifteen acres of land. It has sewer, has water capacity, and I think there's plenty of parking. Whether it's four hundred spaces, four thirteen, whatever it is, it's more than enough spaces for the two hundred units so that there would be no off-site parking, obviously. The location is four hundred and fifty-five feet, the building, the closest building is four hundred and fifty-five feet from the Merritt Parkway. And then, of course, it fronts on Black Rock Turnpike, which has the existing motel on it. So I don't think this is the type of application where we're really tucked in a tight residential neighborhood at all. The traffic study was done by S L R, Dave Sullivan, if you all know him, he's been around a very long time. It's testified before many commissions. And he says that the project, if approved, that it would operate at a very good level of service during peak service. He checked the site distances at the entrance and exit and found those to be adequate. As far as I was providing, I, I think we provided a fairly detailed conceptual site plan. It shows the conservation easement area, and that's recorded on the land record, so that's not changing. It shows the location of the proposed buildings with the internal driveway. There's no question we would have to be filing an application with Wetlands. We just don't have to do it now. This is only for a zone change and text amendment. But when I come in with a final site plan, we would have to go to Wetlands and have their report given to you so that you can evaluate it. I don't know whether there's gonna be any regulated activity or not, just don't know at this point. I don't know whether there's gonna be any regulated activity or not. Just don't know at this point. There may not be. The site plan then will be accompanied by all the things that you're familiar with, a stormwater drainage plan. Uh, a landscaping plan, a lighting plan. All that would come in under the site plan. Uh, we would probably take it to code review, like we do most of these things. Um, and if there's any comments from the fire marshal, police, or whatever it may be. Um, we would, we would have that all flushed out and then come back to you.
Would you do an updated traffic? You already provided the traffic, but I mean, to the extent that there's any change, which especially with the um. I mean, at least it's been brought up, um, internal. Circulation has been somewhat challenged now.
Listen, I, I would have, I would have a engineer sign off on the plans, right? So, so, oh, so what are conceptual plans versus final plans? Conceptual plans, um. Are plans and they can be designed, and they were in this case by an engineer. But um a final site plan has to be signed and then have stamped by a licensed um engineer. And if, uh, uh, my opinion, if, if I were a licensed engineer. And a driveway, internal driveway did not work, he's not gonna put his signature and stamp on that drawing. Just as an attorney wouldn't sign his name on a pleading that he thinks, that he didn't write or didn't agree on it, someone else drafted. He just wouldn't do that. Um, so. I don't know if I need a new traffic study, but I would certainly need a professional engineer. Sign and stamp a drawing that this works. And on that drawing, I think I've done it. You know, in, I don't know about this town. I can't remember anymore. In a town every night where they 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 draw the little vehicle, right? The the biggest fire truck you got. And then I think it's called like a, uh, an arc turning radius. So you can see that it it can get in and out. So we would probably do that on the final site plans. I don't know if that's, I don't. Know if that's done by a traffic engineer. I think it's usually done by the site.
I mean, to the extent, I think that.
The site engineer.
The extent we get to that point, I mean, that sounds like it might be helpful.
Yeah, I agree with you. Okay, yeah. Um, so you would get all that information and I, then you can make your determination whether it's reasonably safe um or not. Um, as far as the Merritt Parkway, um. The law is pretty clear. There's no statutory or common law right under Connecticut law that I'm aware of. That you could have an unobstructed view or vista unless there is a specific written easement or deed restriction. Cases that I've tried, they were all dealing with whether you could see the water, right, from a um. From your house and then someone builds a house in front of you and then you can't see the water anymore. Um, unless your property has an easement, a view easement or site easement. Um, and it's in writing and it's recorded on the land records, you you're not, you're not given that. It's not a right that you have. So um, I'm not aware of um any implied easements or prescriptive easements. Um, when it comes to a view or sight, the only time those apply are for access. You can get a prescriptive uh easement uh for driveway access. Uh, or an implied easement for for a a driveway access, but not view or sight. So this whole concept is, I understand it, um, uh, where they're coming from. But I don't think it's uh uh something that is legally. For you to consider under an eight thirty, under an eight dash thirty G application.
Well, certainly historic. Interests are consideration for eight thirty G.
Yeah, I think the historic. Part of the Merritt Parkway was well, well documented and stated by one of their witnesses. It's the bridges. It's the, it's the um trees in the right of way, you know, uh.
Well, I mean, they've taken the position that it's not just that and not just, as you said in the. Fourteen seventy-seven Congress, the corridor, but extends out to a park vista.
Yeah, um, I, I, I think that's. Overreaching on their part. That's, maybe that's the like word. That that would be the way I would describe that. Um. I think that they can do what they want in their right of way, hundred percent. But beyond that, I don't, I don't think they have the legal right uh to do that. I don't see any case law that they've provided or shown me that they can, or you. Um, I understand the residents' concerns about traffic and density and all the things we've heard them speak about. But um, as you well know, just. Case law says concerns are not, are are not good enough, you know, those. It has to rise to the level of. Substantial evidence in the record as to health and safety. Um, and then, of course, I have to consider whether you can make reasonable changes. Um. And even if with that, does it outweigh the need for affordable housing? I don't think I heard anything that um. Um, would rise to that level. I get the concerns. I I I do. Um, but I don't think that it rises to the level. Of um outweighing the need for affordable housing, at least. It's, and it's not, in my opinion, it's my reading of case law, right? That's all I can do. I don't think that the cases uh would support that. So if a judge were to hear this, I don't believe that they would sustain um. Um, the denial based on those concerns that the residents had. So um, having said that. All I'm asking for at this point is for an approval of the zone change and text amendment. Um, and I would come back with a final site plan. That would be, in my words, substantially similar to what I showed you. And um. Ask you to, you would at that time, having had the inland wetlands, uh either report or approval. They may say we have no jurisdiction. I don't, you know, I don't know. And um. Those reasons, I think you should approve it.
Questions? Uh, they made a. The um Parkway Conservancy had suggested. Uh, reasonable combination of lowering the. Stories or filming down to the other two down one.
I heard that.
Yeah, um. Is that a reasonable accommodation that could work? We have done that in other, in the Park Ave one. That's right off of uh exit forty. Yeah, I don't know the exact address, but it's right off exit forty-seven.
Eight thirty G?
Uh, it's not forty-seven anymore. What is it now? I don't know.
Oh, the exits.
Yeah, they changed the exits. I think that's off eighteen.
Five, five, four, five Park Avenue, and it was an eight thirty G application.
Yeah.
Uh, so we have done it there. So how is that as a reasonable accommodation?
I guess my position would be that um. That the height alone is not something that the court considers as a consideration. That could be um. Reasonably changed just because in and of itself it's too high. Um, I did, I did like. Uh, the idea that you could soften or perhaps. Some respects block the view with vegetation. That to me would be more of a reasonable change than um knocking off uh units or floors. In the rationale, I don't. Guys are sophisticated commission. You know that it costs a lot of money to build these buildings until, in order to get. The, and then there's sixty affordable units where the rents are a lot lower than market rate. Takes a long time to get your money back um by having less, less units.
Yeah, I mean, you're building less, so I guess the question is, does that throw the financial viability of the three buildings? Project off if, uh, well, same site work yet, but. Does that throw, if, if you went, if the commission went down those, that route of reducing the height of the buildings as described, does that throw off the financial viability of the project?
Usually it does.
What is, I mean, I'm.
It usually does because that's why they're proposed the way they are. Um, don't forget, these are with parking. I think there was two floors of parking. Building, so um that's an expense that I know it adds to the height, but.
I mean, you could theoretically knock off two floors and it only be one residential. Unless parking. On that one building.
I mean, I I suppose that's something we could look at, right? Um, with the final site plans, I don't know. Yeah, because right now all you're doing is saying, hey, there's a max of two hundred and four. You're not. We don't know until the site, until the site, till I give you the final.
Well, that's the problem with the substantial, I mean, that. There you have the substantially similar aspect is if we were to play that kind of. Now, if we were gonna play out that analysis, then all of a sudden substantially similar to what I gave you kinda hurts because I can't. Play around with it, so to speak.
I didn't think of it that way.
No, I mean, I.
That's why I did it.
Your point is, I mean, listen.
That was not why I did it.
Everybody had in the back of their mind what's having with a problem in Westport that they're having.
That's why I did it.
They, here's a regulation that we wanna do. Here's a conceptual site plan. Hey, this looks great. And then a year or two later, with a different attorney.
Yeah, that's what I was worried about.
Yeah, with a different attorney, because you're not coming in.
No, I would never do that.
Differently. I know, I mean, just. You in general or any reasonable attorney is not gonna do that. They, they come in with this new site plan that's completely different than the initial conceptual site plan. But was within the footprint of the, so I know why you put it in.
That's why I did it.
Yeah, but I mean, it is what it is. There's no ever perfect scenario, so.
We can, we can rest that at, at the site plan time.
Oh, I'm sorry, I had more, uh. Let's go down the line. Commissioner Levy then ran off.
Uh, based on your comments, I assume you'd have no problem with. Amending the text amendment to provide that any site plan review would be subject to the eight thirty G standard.
I have no problem with that. I think I said that. I mean, I think I put it in there, yeah.
It's kinda there.
You don't like the way I write.
And then the other is, you know, and ultimately it'll fall upon us to decide, but. These concerns about access, you know, the traffic issue and the turning radius. Uh, is that something that you feel, that you feel um should be addressed at this time? Or are we premature and that should be addressed at the time?
I really think that's a site plan. Really think that's a site plan uh issue. Because then you're gonna have the final plan right there, you know, um. Just conceptual is just that, this is kinda where we're coming in. This is where the buildings are going. This is the internal layout. But when I come in with a final site plan, well, boy, that, that, that's it, right? That has to work. So I think the argument, not that it's an argument, but I think that the time to address those kinds of issues are when I give you the final site.
So, starting with some specifics uh that were just raised. Would you consider specifying the amount of impermeable surface? In your site plan right now and quantify that and that in the ordinance, because that would address many of the questions we're talking.
Oh, the text amendment. Um, well, yeah, what is, the, the, you're talking about like the eighty percent or uh uh impervious area?
Or less than eighty percent.
Oh, oh, no, 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 I know, but that, that, you're talking about. A maximum.
Yeah, that kind of percentage of.
Yeah, I don't mind if you put that in.
Talking about maximizing, ma-.
A maximum, I don't know.
Cap on it or what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, cuz that, that would limit, limit.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you on that.
So that would then.
That would go in a text amendment. I agree with you.
Create some parameters around substantially the same.
I tried to help you out by putting in more, um. How can I say the word? More concrete uh setbacks and whatnot. So that it would, that the buildings would have to be. What I've shown you. In this text amendment. So I think that, to answer your question, if you were to include.
Saying.
Yeah.
To quantify, if it's stormwater permits. If you don't, if you have a smaller amount of impermeable surface. Right, that's a minor amendment typically, so. So you'd be open to that. So that's.
Yeah, I didn't put that in there, but you could.
And then, and then back to, well, but we, we, we would need to know what the impermeable surface is in your drawings. You, you're going back to the purpose of a site plan is for us to assess it.
Correct.
And the information we provide, you provided gives us an overall view of it. It allows us to assess certain characteristics like parking. Height. But the entry. Is not an internal circulation on roads. It's a public access. That information right now is. So the purpose of the site plan is to give us enough information to make a decision. I don't have enough information right now to make a decision on that. And you offer no alternatives, so you're going to. But the, I'm a little confused because the hearing's closed. Right? So we don't have enough information to say, right now. The information you've given to us is inadequate.
I, I'm not following you. I apologize. Maybe it's late and I'm tired, but what's inadequate?
The design of the intersection. Where the, the access road coming down the hill from the residential. Paralleling Black Rock Turnpike.
Yeah.
The T intersection from the um. Medical office.
Yeah, no, my answer to that was when I give you a final site plan.
We're supposed to, the purpose of the site plan is for us to make an assessment. The assessment we have right now is incomplete.
No, it's not. You have a conceptual site plan. You know where it's gonna go.
Right, and based upon that, it's. It's inadequate. You haven't shown us a mitigating set of circumstances that can address that. Which you said you would do, but we wait and rely on some other group receiving that responsibility. Cuz right now.
No, I.
The information that's there is inadequate.
So I think what I told the chairman was that I would get the drawing that our engineer. He worked on that intersection and I would submit that by Thursday.
The meeting's closed.
No.
Well, no, I mean.
Okay.
No, it wouldn't be closed.
Let's back out. So I mean, I think at the initial presentation, I'm not, this is just a recitation. I'm not trying to. Is, he had initially that's, that initial survey. Uh, that showed that more parallel. Yes. Right? And I think, and I don't remember where they came up, but then their engineer presented a. Alternative, more elongated entrance and exit. That he referenced at the time that we are now gonna get later, so. We are going to. I'm not sure if I, I'm not sure if I'm gonna close the hearing because I don't know what Attorney Green wants to rebut one way or the other. So it's not gonna be closed, I guess. I guess that's not the right word.
So I will submit that.
That's gonna be done. And again, this is regulation amendments, so not a site plan. So that's the other thing is, he's coming in with regulations and a conceptual plan, and I guess his point is. I will figure out everything else on a site plan or psych compliance later. That's kinda what we are.
The site plan has a purpose.
No, there's no, let's just be, I, I guess it's, let's be clear. I think it's, I think we can all agree that there's no site plan in this.
There's no final site plan submitted in this application.
That is, yeah, but that's.
This. Site plan here, this one. Has a purpose, correct? And what's that purpose?
Give you some general idea of what the text amendment is about.
That was presented.
For our approval.
No, not for your approval.
For our approval of the regulation amendment.
Yes, for, to help assist you in making your decision for a text amendment and zone change.
That's not a site plan. It's unsigned, it's not by any.
I'm not, I'm not proposing it.
Not by any like uh presenting engineer. That must have been pretty clear. I know. Even Attorney Green would say, had said, in his thing, that the site plan is not signed. It's not by the current engineer.
So.
It's meant to be, it's meant to be.
It's a little frustrating because of specific terminology. According to the A I A, pre schematic, schematic, design development, construction drawings. We, you know, we could solve all of this if we were more disciplined, but there is a plan.
It's a conceptual plan, yes.
Conceptual plan that is provided to us.
Yes.
To allow us to make a decision.
Help you make a decision, yes.
No, allow us, enable us.
Not, you're not approving that plan. You're approving a text amendment.
Approving the text amendment. Now, if this were. Had less information on it. Your premise is that it would give us no basis to render a decision. There, uh, my point is that there's inadequate information on this drawing, call it what you want. For me to render, and and there's like four or five categories of things we're supposed to be looking at, fire life, safety, circulation. Conceptually, there's not enough information on here for us to render those overarching decisions.
Okay, so I'm gonna disagree with you and I'll tell you why.
I, I, I'm making the decision.
Yeah, I know you are. But here's my, here's what I'm saying. So I could have submitted. Um, just a text amendment and zone change with no conceptual site plan. But I couldn't in this town because you require one under two point four four. You require a conceptual site plan. So I've given you a conceptual site plan.
Right, but we're supposed to determine whether this poses a safety risk, correct?
You're supposed to determine, yeah, yeah, I think your word. You're supposed to determine, yeah, yeah, I, I think your words are okay, yeah, that's, you're all right.
And if I don't have enough information to determine if there's a safety risk. What's, what am I supposed to do?
Courts will say, not me, will say that you will have the opportunity to make that determination. When a final site plan is submitted in front of you.
It's never gonna come back to us.
Yes, it has to.
Okay.
Has to come back to you. I'm making that representation, and it's in, and it's in the text amendment. Yeah. Absolutely, Commissioner, otherwise you're right, you couldn't make a decision.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Okay. Anything else? Any else? All right, so I, okay, so I thought you were, I don't know what the purpose, um. All right, so we will leave. How do I work? Yeah, it's gonna remain, I'm not gonna close, I'm gonna end the rebuttal, end the rebuttal. So the hearing remains open for the limited purpose of what we described, which is. He's gonna get us, Attorney Bellis is going to get us that conceptual rendering. Uh, for the, um, I guess the modified or elongated, uh, access. I know what we, uh, based on the footprints of the exhibit that Attorney Green gave. Um, and Attorney Green, his presentation will have, you know. Once he receives that by, hopefully the end of day business on Thursday. We convene next week for really the limited purpose of Attorney Green addressing that. Modified or alternate elongated a, access point only, and the S L R and, um.
So it's basically as.
We're gonna go back to public co, go ahead.
I, I don't mean to be out of order, but it's basically gonna be part of whatever was shown at the last hearing. That excerpt from whatever was up on this.
Yeah, basically taking your, this jo, this drawing. I don't know if I can see that, uh, the conceptual, you know, modify, well, the modified. Access point within the footprint of your schema, of your exhibit, so. We will go at the next hearing. Twenty-six is, sounds accurate, nineteen nineteen?
Yes, that's correct.
So at the next hearing, we will start with public comment, we'll, the only thing will be, it was public comment with Attorney Green. For that, the S L R update, and then the, the other map thing that you gave with the distance.
It's an aerial map.
Thank you, the aerial map, so that's the only thing that you're gonna address, and to the extent that you have any rebuttal or need any rebuttal, that's what's gonna.
I'll determine that at the time.
You come in, Attorney Green, and say you've got nothing, then we're done. I don't expect that to be the case, but just to highlight it.
Just recap on one other point that was mentioned earlier, so a two hundred foot vegetative buffer in acceptable condition.
Oh, I didn't say two hundred feet, no, I don't know the answer to that, Commissioner. I, I said that it sounded like a reasonable. Having a, a buffer with vegetation sounded reasonable to me. I don't, I don't know if there's two hundred feet to do it.
All right, so rebuttals ended.
Oh, yeah.
The, uh, hearing, I guess, the hearing remains open for the procedure that I just laid out.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Thank you very much, all of you.
So I will.
I'll see you next week.
Thank you. Uh, again, hearing remains open to these two items. I will, uh, adjourn the matter till next week and close the meeting tonight. Now, the station we talked about.